I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. A roll call.
Mayor Alahousses?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terri Penny is absent and excused. Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Murphy from the Eritarian Universalist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Oh God, tomorrow is 9/11, and we're at the height of hurricane season. God, we ask for your divine protection and support during some difficult moments. Stay with us, oh God. Comfort us, defend us during emergencies. Help the people in the Bahamas, in Florida, in the Carolinas, and in other places who are recovering from Hurricane Dorian. May they obey the prayers of all people. God, show us how to prepare for a new season and new ways of living together. Teach us how to give thanks and teach us how to love each other. Amen.
Welcome, and thank you all for being here tonight. We will begin our meeting tonight with public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. For the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Thank you Reverend Moran. I guess he took off already, but we were very lucky these last two weeks that God, nature, however you want to look at it, steered the storm away from us. But let it be a pretend to future events. That storm hung over Grand Bahamas almost two days. We've been lucky. The storms we usually get, they kind of roll through. But things are changing. Things are changing. You can keep denying it. Climate change is a factor. Makes the wildfires stronger and burn longer. It's drier out there in the West. They're getting an abnormal heat through the Midwest right now, nineties. Should be almost fall. We need to urge our legislators to take more fervent action. Also in this regard, find a way to help the Red Cross. The Lutheran Church Ministry has a group that goes over to these places that need help. Just make sure you're going through a reputable organization. Because I can't imagine, having been through hurricanes before, I went through Andrew, to go through forty hours of wind and storm. It's like a tornado outside your door. Now, for some local stuff. As everybody sees, those apartments behind Mears Crossing are popping up pretty quick. And I would like to make a request to the Board and the City Manager that if not at the next meeting, at a meeting coming soon, we get some kind of update on the road, Mears Mango. Because part of the Certificate of Occupancy Completion requires that road to be completed. I haven't seen any efforts, unless it's behind the scene and design and, you know, engineering stuff, but it would be nice for the public to get some kind of an update as to what the status is. And also, I think, being that we're in budget season and capital improvement projects are on the table, it's time to seriously bring it up again, connecting distant from Klosterman to MLK. It's only like a 200-foot section. And I've been up here before. This has been going on since Dr. DiMandis brought this up in 1982. Or correction, 92. I remember hearing him talk about this years ago. And we've been working on it, working on it. We're getting pretty close, but we need to finish this because this is an important connection for our city. Not only for traffic-wise, because you come up Belcher and everybody's going down Curlew, and you send you back to alternate 19, and it backs up. And if there's an accident somewhere and alternate Neen's backs up, everybody backs up. You know it, I know it, we all know it. Same thing if you're uptown and you want to go down south. Personally, I like to avoid 19. I don't mind going 40-45 on Belcher. It's a nice drive. But when I have to go mile and a half out and a mile and a half, mile back or something to make that connection to get down to Neen and Clearwater, so it'd be nice if we could hear something and maybe invite the project manager from that group to come and maybe explain to the public what's going in. Because I've had people asking me many times, what is that going in back there? They're not really cognizant. Thank you.
Good evening. 901 Bay Shore Drive, Anita Protas. I'm here to say we are all saddened to hear about former Commissioner Jim Archer. He was a great patriot of Tarpon Springs. He loved our community and brought us a lot of publicity. I hope the city will entertain in a month or so during a memoriam for his family with a son who works for the city. And his wife led the code enforcement for many, many years. They were always giving to the community. We didn't do one for Charlie Barnes, who was a city manager for many years, I think off and on 50 years in Tarpon Springs. And there are some others that we don't do that really served the city very well, but we need to do for Mr. Archer. We need a memoriam. And I'm very saddened to hear about our officer's father, because he's brought a lot of publicity to Tarpon Springs. So let's do these memorials, please.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't, is this?
Yeah, yeah. Please identify yourself.
Oh, okay.
State your name and your address. We're gonna wait until later.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm representing Congressman Gus Villarakis tonight about the community health centers. I just didn't know if this was.
Yeah, that's one on the agenda.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Wasn't sure when. I didn't want to miss.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any other comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight? Items that will not be discussed tonight? Well, thank you. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, National Day of Service and Remembrance, September 11th. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, where as of September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and bravery. And whereas, in response to the tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of devotion and unity and carry out timeless acts and kindness. And whereas, September 11th is a day to honor the memory of those who lost, who are lost and those who are united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas, on September 11th, is observed and recognized as the annual National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas, on September 11th, and on the days leading up to and following this day, citizens have the opportunity to participate in activities that honor 9/11 victims and heroes by joining together. Now therefore, I, Chris Alahousses, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby recognize September 11th, 2018, as the National Day of Service and Remembrance. And the proclamation will be presented tomorrow at a 9/11 presentation and remembers at the Public Service Building. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is another proclamation. Commissioner Carr will read the proclamation on library card signup month.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas a library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help to GE classes, and whereas libraries empower all people to pursue their interests, discover their passions, and achieve their highest potential as learners and citizens, and whereas librarians bring communities together, creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together, and whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding their services to meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas libraries promote equity, making digital technology and information equally accessible to all. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Library Card Signup Month, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. And Carrie, the library director of the Tarpon Springs Library, will be accepting this proclamation.
I would like to thank the Commission for this proclamation, and I'm very pleased to be here to celebrate Library Card Signup Month. We're having a lot of fun with it this year. The honorary chairs are the Toy Story characters. So we have a special contest where the Toy Story characters have been traveling all around Tarpon Springs with their library card and posing in different locations. And you can come to the library and see if you can identify the locations, because we have a contest sponsored by our friends at the library. We're also just launched a new collection of board games and puzzles that you can check out and take home. And we're offering programs to support that. On September 18th, we're having a game day. September 23rd, we're having a senior, I'm sorry, September 18th is game night. September 23rd is Senior Game Day. And on the 30th of the month, we're having a escape room that's Harry Potter themed. And these games and activities that we have, not only help to enrich people's lives, they also help encourage strategic thinking, and that's all to promote library cards. Also, library cards help people transform their life with educational opportunities and technology training. And just one more fun thing we are doing, we're having a stuffed animal sleepover at the library. I don't know if anyone's heard about this, but on the 20th of the month, children can come to a special storytime, bring their stuffed animals, and then their stuffed animals will stay and spend the night in the library. And we will document with pictures all the activities that they get up to in the nighttime. And the next day, the kids get to come pick up their stuffed animals, and we're going to be sharing the slideshow of what their stuffed animals did. We'll also be posting on our social media. So for more information about all these activities, visit our website, tarponlibrary.org. Yeah, tarponlibrary.org and our social website, our social media sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
I'd like to.
Are there any public comments on this item? Commission comments?
Yeah. I want to thank you for all your hard work. I know you're constantly moving and shaking and doing things at the library. And I love all these new activities you're gonna have. Is there an age group for that stuffed animal? Nice. I'm not talking about me, but I have a four-year-old granddaughter.
Yes, all of you got one of our newsletters, which are also available online and at the library. Yes, that is recommended for ages two to nine.
Oh, okay.
But we won't turn anyone away.
That's it.
Well, thank you. We now go into the presentation, item number three, Library Board Annual Report. Will be presented by Mrs.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. What?
The microphone.
Microphone.
Pull it down. You trying to say I'm short?
No.
First of all, before I start, I'd like to invite anyone who's here from the library to please stand up. You'll be appointed or gonna be appointed can stand up too. Would you all like to just introduce yourselves and say who you are and what you do?
Erica Sarris, President of the Library, President of the House. I'm just going to break right down past president. My name is, sorry. My name is Dolly Betty. I came as your past member of the President's. And I just came off the board, so I lean.
I'm coming, board. Yes. Okay, before I start, I just want to give you a little bit of trivia. Did you know that there are more public libraries in the U.S. than there are Starbucks? That nearly 100% of them provide free Wi-Fi and access to computers? That in 2016, there were 1.4 billion in-person visits to public libraries across the U.S. This is about 4 million a day. That there were 113 million attendees at public library programs in 2016, more than all major league baseball, football, and basketball association games combined. So I think our libraries are popular. Libraries transform because transformation is essential to the communities that we serve. Libraries transform because students who read during the summer end up in the honor roll in the fall. And I think anybody who's had children or grandchildren in schools, they realize that our students lose a lot over the summer. The library helps to keep them on track, giving them reading activities. We have an extensive summer reading program in addition to educational activities throughout the year. Our programs often highlight STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math principles, as well as promote literacy skills. We do Reading with the Rays in the summer to encourage kids to read. And this summer, our reading programs, because of the moon landing anniversary, was a universe of stories. Libraries transform because libraries make leaders. The Tarpon Springs Public Library provides programs and resources to help businesses grow and to enable people to get technology training, career assistance, additional education, and to enhance job skills. We offer an A-to-Z database, which gives email marketing, job search, et cetera. Learn it at Lynda, which gives online access to the latest software. We had our first high school person who got her high school degree through the library. We have SCORE, which is small business training. Libraries transform because librarians know that, oh, skipped one. No. Okay. Libraries transform because librarians know that information is the best medicine for healthcare questions. And the City of Tarpon Springs Senior Information Center, thank you Mayor Alahousses for your, offers one-to-one help from trained volunteers, as well as educational programs, social activities, health presentations by Advent Health North, and assistance with the Healthy Transportation Libraries transform because hands-on learning builds stronger brains. Children, teens, and adults can enjoy a myriad of different activities, arts and crafts. They can learn to play musical instruments. They can take home seeds to plant. They can check out educational tablets and more at the Tarpon Springs Public Library. And I speak of this from a personal nature, that my grandchildren, my grandson was the very first one to check out an instrument from the public library. He checked out a guitar. They've made terrariums. They've just, they've checked out the educational tablets. So lots of good things. Libraries transform because learning happens 24/7, not just 9 to 5. The digital resources from the library, including eBooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, music, and online instruction are all available from your computer at home, or if you don't have a computer at home, of course, from the library. And there's ancestry.com, which I use a lot. There's Overdrive, which is a way to check out eBooks. Hoopla, which gives music, audiobooks, digital magazines, Pronunciator, in case you want to learn a new language or brush up on your Greek. There's artist works for you or your children to learn how to paint or draw or make music. Libraries transform because the expert in the library is you. The library partners with other city departments and organizations to allow community members and staff to share their expertise. I don't know how many of you were able to attend Tales of Tarpon, that they've done a couple of times at the library, which has been just a wonderful program. And there was a hurricane preparedness program offered just last month. Libraries transform because access equals opportunity. The Friends of the Tarpon Springs Library provide financial and volunteer support for enhanced services, resources, and programs. The Friends donated $40,000 to the library last year. So thank you, Friends. Libraries transform because they inspire understanding and community healing. The Tarpon Springs Library offers trauma-informed community resources and programs. The library staff and volunteers are available to help community members find social services, government assistance after a hurricane or a job loss, or to meet other needs. There's peace for Tarpon, and there's the right service at the right time. Libraries transform because eureka moments happen here. As Carrie mentioned, we now have a new collection of games and puzzles. We have an escape room. We have museum, free museum passes to get you into several of the museums free. The mission of the Tarpon Springs Public Library is to provide excellent library and information services to fulfill the needs of users, to enhance quality of life, and to be a focal point of the community. And I'd like to think that our library does all that. And you also have a sheet with all of the different, which I won't read to you. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott, so nice to see you again, and thank you for the presentation. Did you know Mrs. Scott was my schoolteacher in high school, Tarpon High School?
Wasn't a good student.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Library Advisory Board, the Friends of the Library, the volunteers, and of course, the staff. People, you're doing an excellent job. Thank you for your services to our library, and appreciate all the services that the library is offering to the people of Tarpon Springs. As Mrs. Scott stated, the STEAM program for the students, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, which is the foundation for a good education. It helps our local businesses to enhance their management skills. The Senior Information Center, which is part of the library, it's run by volunteers, and it provides information to seniors about services and benefits that are available to them. They provide information on the transportation for seniors, and also they do many presentations on the senior services. And I want to thank you for everything you do to our seniors as well as to the students. Thank you very much. Are there any commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you very much. And now we go into presentation. Item number four is the Dental Clinic Project, and will presented by Paul Smith, the Public
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. And I'm pleased to present to you tonight a proposed ground lease that would involve a community dental clinic project. And I'd like to give you a brief presentation tonight. Before I do that, though, I'd like to introduce some members from the Community Health Centers of Pinellas, or I'm going to refer to as CHCP, that are here tonight to represent the project. We have Roger Salu. He's the Treasurer of the Board for CHCP. We also have Elodie Dorso. She's the President and CEO of CHCP. Steve Kelly is the Project Manager for CHCP. And I do want to say we've worked successfully with Steve before in the medical clinic next door, so he's involved in this proposed project as well. And finally, last but not least, Erin Doherty is the Dental Director for CHCP. She's also here in support. So they're available if you have some questions regarding their organization and their proposed project. I'm here to present the overview and the lease that we're proposing to you tonight. Before I flip the slide, you can see up on the cover slide there, that's the location of the city parcel. It's located on the northeast corner of Lime Street and Huey Avenue. To help locate you a little bit better, that's the public shopping center just to the right. The post office is just to the south, and our public safety building is diagonal to that. One other point I want to make, you'll probably notice, but further up on Huey Avenue is a major PSTA hub, so a lot of public transportation going in and out of there. I really think that would make a nice dynamic for these facilities as well. So the site itself, the city site is a 1.6-acre, partially vacant city lot, and I'll get into what I mean by that in just a second, but it's on that northeast corner I mentioned. It's immediately to the north is the Community Health Center of Tarpon Springs, also constructed and operated by CHCP. The parcel in question here, the city parcel is currently and will continue to be utilized by both the city and Duke Energy for some vital utilities purposes. We maintain a lift station on the site. We also have underground water sewer and stormwater pipes that need to remain active. CHCP has agreed to work within our existing utilities and will pay the cost of any relocation. Duke Energy has high-voltage power lines and a buried pipeline along the western frontage of the site. They propose to utilize- They propose to utilize what's left, basically, which I've calculated to be about half of the area of the site for their clinic as proposed. The value of the lease is to be of a nominal consideration to recover the city's cost of this portion of the land over time. A little bit more about CHCP. They are a not-for-profit federally qualified health center, and they serve the most vulnerable population of Pinellas County. They operate a network of 13 health centers, including a mobile health center all around the county. Services provided include family and pediatric medicine and a host of other services, including dental services. They propose to expand those dental services at Tarpon Springs and increase the access to the preventative and oral health care services for low-income, uninsured, and underinsured residents of Pinellas County. They provided nearly 10,000 patients with over 20,000 dental visits in 2018 from their St. Petersburg and Clearwater Dental Centers. So how is the site proposed to be used? Well, as I mentioned, this would be an expansion for dental services up in our Tarpon Springs area. They're proposing a 5,000-square-foot full-service center on the site. You'll have access from Lime Street or Huey Avenue. There'll be onsite parking and onsite stormwater retention and treatment. All construction and operation costs will be met by CHCP. They will plan to relocate a city water line at their expense to make this site usable for them, and they'll work within all the other utilities to make sure that it's usable for us as well. So in summary, we're going to continue to use the site as we are now, and then in addition to that, we would have a partner on site providing dental services to the community. CHCP estimates 12 new full-time jobs when this facility would be fully operational, and it would estimate to be serving nearly 5,000 residents for more than 10,000 visits on an annual basis. Here's a picture of the site as proposed. You'll see in the middle of the picture is the building itself, but 5,000 square feet. And if I had a way to point to you on this slide, I would tell you that that west side of the site is the electric utilities. Our lift station is located at the bottom of the site. There's a very deep sewer line connecting up to that. And what they're able to do with their engineers is sort of move that building over and shoehorn it in there so that if we ever had to do any work on that sewer line, it wouldn't be underneath that building. So they really worked with us and with that site to make something that could work for them and for us into the future. You'll also notice they took some irregularly shaped stormwater ponds to accommodate some existing buried pipes on the property diagonally there. So the lease is 22 pages long. I did my best to put it on one slide, the basics for you, but if you have any more detailed questions, we're certainly glad to get into that. The term as proposed is 25 years with two five-year renewal options. Each one of those options, we would be able to look at the conditions. The tenant would need to be fully in compliance with the lease at that time. So up to 35 years is being shown on the draft lease there. The rent is going to be an escalating rent, starting at $4,000 per year, escalating 5% every five years. So those last five years of that 25-year term would be $4,862 per year, based on that formula. Additional tenant expenses, they would cover the real estate taxes, the insurance, utilities, all the other applicable government charges. Restrictions on use, it'll be operated by a not-for-profit entity, and that's written into the lease. It's consistent with all land use and zoning ordinances and strictly in accordance with the conceptual plan, which is the drawing that we show you there in the backup. Assignment and subletting shall not occur without prior city written approval. And if it is approved, there is an opportunity to increase the rent if we see that to be the right thing to do. Indemnity, the city shall not be liable or responsible for damages for any personal injury or injuries, deaths, damages, or losses to any person on property arising from tenant's failure or actions. That condition goes on and on, but I put the basics of that in there for you. Insurance, there's both casualty insurance requirements and liability insurance requirements. And there's a construction schedule. And CHCP is eager to do this project. They've put a pretty solid schedule in here. There is a little bit of room for them if they run into unavoidable delays outside of their control, but they've estimated February 28, 2020 is their start date, and they want to have that building constructed by December 31 of that same year. So that concludes this presentation, and if there are any questions that either I or CHCP can answer, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Smith, thank you for the presentation. I'd like to welcome the team of the dental clinic that is here with us tonight. I'd like to say that Mr. Salu, Mr. Licurz, and I were visiting a dental clinic in Clearwater, and I was very impressed with their professionalism and the services that they're providing to the people in Clearwater. We've been waiting a long time for this opportunity to have a dental clinic right next to the medical center to serve the vulnerable people here in Tarpon Springs. This is one of the senior services initiatives that we have, and I am very grateful to see that is happening. As you said, this is really a win-win situation with this agreement that the city will recover the cost of the land over time, but also the clinic will be right next to the dental clinic, I mean, next to the medical clinic that is going to provide services to the people of Tarpon Springs. I think it's good for the community. And I am very impressed with the design because it was designed in such a way that they're going to avoid any relocation of the utilities. As you mentioned, we have a lot of utilities there, including the lift station. So that's not going to bother. And I'm looking forward to see the completion of the dental clinic to provide services to our people in Tarpon Springs. Thank you. Any commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Paul, thank you for putting this together and the update. I know we've had a lot of communication over the past couple of months, and thank you all for being here as well. I think this is a great opportunity for the City of Tarpon Springs to partner with this organization, CHCP, really giving the opportunity to low-income individuals of Tarpon Springs. And if someone wanted to come in with insurance as well, they can do that too. But it is a really unique opportunity that the city comes along and say, we'll somehow figure out and work with you to provide this property at a low lease rate to be a partner in that with you. So looking forward to this coming forward in our community. I think it's a great asset for a certain demographic, for sure, of our population that might not have the care that they should have. So I think this is a great asset, again, for this community and looking forward to supporting this later on tonight.
I echo the mayor and Commissioner Carr. I thank you, Paul, and all of you. Mr. Salu, now you stepped from the Budget Advisory Committee to another committee, I see. But anyway, I'm so glad to see this property used finally because it's been vacant and we've talked about different things for it, but I'm glad to see that it's finally going to be used, and it is a win-win. So it's great for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the CHCP for being here tonight and for all the great work you do for our community and will continue to do for our community. And I wanted to thank staff for coming up with what seems to be a really smart way to maximize the use of this property. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Before we go to the public comments, I'd like to invite to the podium, Mr. Salu. Tell us about it. That's his dream and it's coming true.
Thank you, Mayor. Roger Salu, 967 Bay Shore. As you've alluded to, I miss going through budgets this year. How much, I'm sure all you guys enjoyed that. But today for the dental clinic, this is something we came forward with a number of months ago as we got your permission to start the undertaking. We've talked a lot about getting here. We're pleased to be here this evening. I know we had the city manager and the mayor down to look at Clearwater. We have a facility there. We have another one down in St. Pete. And between those two, we cover a pretty significant number of dental patients within the county, but unfortunately, the north part of the county didn't have one. And this was a perfect place to put one in. The property was appropriate next to the clinic that we already have. I think it's a wonderful mix and fit for Tarpon Springs. I really appreciate the support that I've gotten from all of you folks as I've talked to you and look forward to having that clinic open and all of you there as we cut the ribbon at the front door in a little over a year. I thank you for your support and really appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jill Peters. I'm here to represent Congressman Gus Villaracus. I guess I could give you our Tarpon Springs office address that works. It's on 600 Klosterman in the SPC building. The congressman sends his regrets. He's up in Washington, DC, voting tonight, or else he would be here with you all. But he sent me, and I'm honored to be here to speak about such an important issue to the congressman, but also such an important issue to this community. So he left me with this speech. I'll read it for you. As a strong proponent of community health centers throughout our nation, I'm very excited about one of the proposals before the Tarpon Springs City Commission tonight. I'm voting in Washington, or else I would be at your meeting in person, speak on favor of this item. Using an innovative delivery model, federally qualified health centers, or FQHCs, leverage federal resources to provide high-quality health care to the uninsured, uninsured, or underinsured. They utilize a sliding fee scale and do not turn anyone away for inability to pay. Over 25 million Americans currently receive their primary care, mental care, substance abuse treatment, and dental care through an FQHC. I have authored legislation which has been signed into law to extend funding for FQHCs, and I continue to fight for their expansion because I have personally witnessed the value they have brought to the communities that I serve. They're cost-effective and part of what is working well within our health care system. Our own Tarpon Springs campus of the Community Health Centers of Pinellas County has a long withstanding tradition of providing outstanding service to local residents. However, I hear routinely that the need for dental services in this part of our community far exceeds the capacity. I've been working with federal agencies to help pave the way for this campus to receive a grant to fund the operation of a full dental clinic. The long-term lease you are considering tonight is an integral part of making that happen. Approval of this item will be very beneficial to our mutual constituencies. Thank you for your consideration and for your continued service to our community. As always, please do not hesitate to contact me if I could be of any assistance to you on this or any other matter. Respectfully, Gus Villaracus, Member of Congress. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I will...
I would sign my name, but nobody else is doing it, so I don't want to start anything. Oh, I'm David Archer. I live at 512 East Martin Luther King. I don't come before you to encourage that you do this, but I come before you to thank you, the mayor, the commissioners, in advance for looking at this as an opportunity to provide much-needed services to the City of Tarpon. And if you just endorse me, I'd just like to just talk in terms of trying to not only celebrate you, a lot of times, as elected officials will come before you, tell you what you're not doing, but they come before you to say that, hey, this is another opportunity that government has taken to provide for the quality of life. You know, in the year around 2003, '04, Congressman Mike Villaracus got a $1.2 million appropriation for that site, for that building to be built. After looking all around, it seemed like there would not be an opportunity to build it even after he got the money. The Lutheran Church stepped forward and provided the land that now is the site of the Community Health Center. And as was stated, Gus Villaracus, Congressman Villaracus, has been understanding the plight of the underserved, patients, the uninsured, low-income, the working poor. He's always been a proponent of community health centers, and both of the Villaracus should be celebrated for their efforts to bring the quality of life issues back home to Tarpon Springs. So I just want to thank them. And one of the statements that he once made, that centers such as the one in Tarpon can refrain emergency room, long-term calls, and provide health and wellness to those without insurance, he said that it was crucial for that center. And I believe the same thing is for the dental center. It's crucial that we continue to provide for those who have needs, those that are without much-needed health care insurance, for some, and for some that do have but don't have the means to even travel to get the dental services that they need. So I come before you just to thank you in advance because I know that this commission, before I even heard you, would do what is considered the right thing in supporting this opportunity. And that's what I look at, is the opportunity for the government of the City of Tarpon to continue to partner with other government officials like Congressman Villaracus in trying to do what's best for the citizens of Tarpon. So I'd just say thank you in advance for your support of this issue.
Good evening. My name is Robin Sanger, 36 Ada Street, Tarpon Springs. And I also am very thankful for what I've heard here this evening, the support that this commission and the leadership of the community health centers has come together to provide yet more services to Tarpon Springs. As you know, quite often Tarpon Springs is not even on the map. People call Clearwater North County, and some think we're in Pasco County. So when we can really bring something to Tarpon Springs to help our residents, I'm all for it. I've been a supporter of the Community Health Center since it was built. In fact, Joe Santini, one of the early directors, was on our first Board of Directors of Peace for Tarpon. It's a medical home. That was very impressive. But this is yet another facet to create a system of care in our community that will be beyond compare. So thank you very much. And I speak on behalf of Peace for Tarpon tonight. Thank you.
Again, Anita Protus, 911 Bay Shore. I think this is wonderful, what you're doing for the community. It's needed. I was a big supporter of the health center, and I can guarantee anything that Roger Salu is associated with, it's going to be stellar. The school he built a few years ago for education for those who needed a better education, the programs he's worked with in the hospital, I'm a little shaky right now. He wasn't on the board for the budget, but I'm sure it'll be okay because he watched everything so severely on it. And I know what he does in Rotary. I know what he does around the community, and he does everything first class. And when I was on the board, we supported the health unit there. I'm glad to see that we're getting a dental clinic. I'd like to see in the future that we have a pharmacy for people who cannot afford their medications, elderly that can't afford their medications, they don't have insurance. Of course, it would have to be controlled and checked, but we do in the future need to have a pharmacy for these people to be able to get their medicines, and I hope that'll be next on the list, that we can be the number-one area in Pinellas County and maybe down south they'll look at us a little better.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? I hear none. Thank you. Thank you very much. We are now going to the consent agenda. Number five is the special event, Tarpon Springs High School Band Boosters, Outro Music Festival, October 19, 2019. Number six is to authorize execution of F.DOT grant to Police Department for High Visibility Enforcement. And number seven is the award bid, number 190063-B-CM Janitorial Services for various locations. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
Number seven.
Number seven should be pulled. Anything else? Any commission comments on the items five and six?
Just the band booster is coming up. That's a really great event for a fundraiser and excited to see the band do that.
Are there any public comments on the items five and six?
Are there any public comments on the items five and six? I hear none. I need a motion for five and six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number seven, which is the bid number 190063-B-CM Janitorial Services for various locations. Commission Carr.
Thanks. Mark, is this an annual amount of $194? Is that over the five years? $194,000? It wasn't clearing the backup.
I believe it's yearly.
Okay.
It's over multiple years. I believe it's over multiple years.
Multiple years?
Yeah.
I think it would be best to defer this then, based on this right now. It's not clearing the backup, and obviously, it's not clear. I think it would be wise or prudent to defer until next meeting.
Well, what I would suggest is, next time when we have a consent agenda on items, if you please deal with a step ahead of time, if you have any questions, that will avoid a lot of confusion. That would be very helpful.
And I'll second that to say, we get our books on Friday afternoon. If I'm busy all weekend and don't get it until Monday night, it's difficult to get those questions in. So, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'll do my best next time.
Thank you. So, what's you suggesting to do?
We don't know, we don't have staff know, they don't know if it's an annual or over five years. I mean, I could assume it's annually, or it's over five years, but I don't want to take that assumption. It's not clearing the backup from a staff member as well, so I think it's best to defer it until we have further information on this.
We worked on this, PD. It's over five years.
Okay.
It's over five years.
You were involved in the, I know Mr.
To a degree, yeah.
I know Mr. Jackus couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, I know. We dealt with the police department portion of it.
It was definitely a five-year.
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be about $38,000 a year. It's not going to be $194,000 a year then, right?
Right.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure there's clarification, because it's not clearing the backup. So, I'll be fine with approving this.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other commission comments?
No.
Are there any public comments on the item number seven? I hear none. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number eight, which is to authorize execution of agreement for the dental clinic. This is the one we just discussed earlier. Any other commission comments or questions?
No.
Any public comments on this item? Thank you. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number nine, which is the Employee Dental Insurance Renewal. Staff report, please.
Ms. Niffen will give the report on this, the next two items, the dental insurance and the property casualty workers' comp insurance renewals.
Honorable Mayor and Board of Commissioners, good evening. Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm here tonight to recommend that the mayor and Board of Commissioners approve the renewal of the dental insurance with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, using a Delta Dental Plan for a period of 12 months commencing October 1st, 2019. As a bit of backup, going back historically speaking, the city has used several different companies over the years. We have moved from one company to another in an attempt to avoid higher claims experience. At one point, we managed to be able to stay with one provider, and in 2016, the city went with, it's a Delta Dental Plan that is offered by Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. We had been with United. We were able to save $15,000 a year by making this move. Now, today, we're looking at a 3.9% increase, primarily because of the dental trend, which is a little over 4%. So, having said that, the recommendation is that the city continue to pay the full costs for the employee share, and also continue its current level of contribution to the dependent tiers, as listed in your addendum. I need to point out that this is part of the employee benefit package that is going to be examined by a third-party consultant, and possibly testing the market to see what's out there. So, this is, the intent is that this be assessed and RFPed.
Thank you. So, first, I want to thank you for taking the time and discussing that plan in detail with me the other day. What we're saying is, the addition cost for the city is only going to be $4,161. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I believe it's very important, and I like to emphasize that, it's very important for the city to provide dental and health insurance to our employees. This is really the best benefit that we have. We don't pay the best salaries here in Tarpon Springs, so it is very important that we provide this benefit to our employees. Again, thank you for taking the time and working with me on that. Any commission comment?
Yeah, I got one there. I just want to thank you. This memorandum is really well put together. It had a lot of data in it. That was really useful. My only question was just to make sure the RFP that we're talking about here is the same one that's due back next year for the health insurance. It's just everything, all combined into one.
You're correct. Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's for next year. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Thank you. Number 10, item number 10 is the Property and Casualty Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal. Staff report?
Yes, again, I'm here to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the renewal of the city's property and casualty and workers' comp insurances with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for a one-year period commencing October 1st, 2019. I'd like to delve into this one a little, with a little more depth, because I think, when you look at the term "property and casualty," it sounds very simple. It really is a little more complicated than that. It's made up of, and I want to just briefly cover the different lines of coverage and how they arrive at the rates. The general liability, the loss ratio, is calculated based on a smoothing technique over five years. The reason they use five years is because of what we call "tail coverage." In other words, claims that are filed well after the fact. So, that's why they go to that longer period of look-up. Normally, in all the other experience-rated lines, the period of look-back is actually three years, not including the current year. So, we go back three years from last year, obviously because this year is not completed yet. For the general liability, our loss ratio was actually .81, and right now, they break even, and that's the cost for the FMIT to break even after reinsurance costs and admin costs is .75. So, it means that we are a little over what we should be, but it's tolerable. The next one I want to talk about is auto liability. And as you realize, as a municipality, we have a lot of autos out there. We have employees that have exposure because of the nature of their jobs. So, we do have some increases in the loss ratio for the auto liability. It's 1.22. Again, the break-even point is .75. Then, I'm going to move to auto physical damage. And again, we have a lot of employees that have a higher exposure because of the nature of their occupation. The loss ratio there was 1.18. The break-even, .75. What that basically means when I say "loss ratios" is 1.18 means that for every dollar they take in, they're paying out $1.18 in claims. Excuse me. The one I really want to focus on is the property, because there's been a lot of talk about property and whether it's, we're getting a good value. It's one of the few lines that I'm going to talk about that's not experience-rated. We cannot control acts of God or Mother Nature. Right now, the city has $87,316,094 in total insured value in our property line. Now, the best way to evaluate that particular benefit is the cost per $1,000 of benefit. So, we take that $87 million and divide it by the premium, and we come up with a ratio of 26 cents for every $1,000 of benefit. Now, this ratio is based on the new rates post-hurricane season. The last two years have been very unkind to the state of Florida. We have had a number of claims, especially in the Panhandle area. Obviously, we remember Irma, but Michael was the one that really dealt a blow to most insurers in the state of Florida that had coverage in that area. As a result, the reinsurers are losing their appetite for what we call "capacity." Capacity is the amount of money they make available for reinsurance. Right now, they are still reeling from Michael, and they have decided that they are going to shrink the amount of capacity that's in the state of Florida, which means, number one, that the cost is going to go up, and number two, the insurers don't want that kind of exposure. We all saw the pictures. We all saw what happened, and it was not pleasant, and as a result, the reinsurance market has both decreased and increased in cost. So, that 26 cents per thousand, given the current reinsurance market, is a fairly competitive rate. Now, the last thing I want to talk about is the workers' comp insurance, which is our shining star this year. Again, it's based on the three-year averaging. I want to say that we've gone from, I believe, 1.28 to .88 in our experience modification, which is a tremendous drop, probably due to the fact that the city has taken a very, very much stronger position and revamped our safety program. There's been more focus on it. And the other thing that really helps is that smoothing. We obviously have dropped a bad year in those three years and picked up a good year. That does help. And that does fluctuate from year to year, depending on what kinds of years you've had in the past. So, basically, that's the little talk in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Ms. Niffen, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. But if you look in the bottom line, is the property liability insurance has increased $76,000.
Correct.
Which is 11%. The workers' comp has decreased $83,000, which is 16%. So, we gained $7,000. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So, the results are good.
Not bad, considering the reinsurance market.
Thank you. Well, I support you continuing for another year till the RFP that we have initiated for next year.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm a licensed insurance agent and admitted insurance nerd, and I was really impressed with that workers' comp modification. I mean, that's really, that's not a fluke at all. What that basically means is that the city is working with the people that experience claims, they're smoothing out their claims. So, great job. I mean, that workers' comp modification, it's unheard of. It's a really steep drop. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Enroll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes. We are now going to the ordinance and resolutions. Item number 11 is the ordinance 2019-18, the application 1981, LDC Amendment to Planning Development. This is a second reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
This is ordinance number 2019-18, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Article 5 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Section 78.01 D1A, by removing the table and adding a reference to the City of Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan, and Section 83.00a, by expanding the ability to waive design requirements to include the land development code, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of ordinance 2019-18. It's the second final reading, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August 2nd and August 30th, 2019.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and staff for this application. There's been no additional information since first reading, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. We have no commission comments. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes, thank you. Now, we're going to item number 12, which is the Resolution 2019-21, the Application 1979, Acceptance of Surplus Property from the F.DOT Alternate Use 19 or Pinellas Avenue. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
This is Resolution number 2019-21, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, accepting surplus property from the State of Florida Department of Transportation locating adjacent to 1395 South Pinellas Avenue, and as described in the attachment, providing for the inclusion of the surplus property in the campus of Helen Ellis Hospital, and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2019-21 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report.
Again, Planning and Zoning Director and staff to this application. This particular application, it was requested actually in conjunction with some of the improvements that are going to be going on at the hospital over the course of the next few years. We, when we did the site planning with the hospital, we found this piece of property that the F.DOT no longer needed. So, being that it's adjacent to the hospital site, we sought permission from them to go through their surplus property process to acquire this piece of property. And that's what this is. It's essentially the deed transfer over to the city, and then we want to also incorporate it into the Helen Ellis campus, so it can be used by the hospital when they're doing their modifications to the parking areas. They've also sought for possible approval by F.DOT, which is still in negotiations, of putting that drain that's in front there along the highway actually underground to kind of make it a little bit more attractive there. Those negotiations are still going on. They're not part of this item, but that's, it's all part of that same discussion. So, that's really what's happening here, is just the transfer of property over to us from the state, so that we can move forward with the next step with the hospital to finish out their improvements for parking lot redesign and to support the new ER. I can answer any questions that you might have.
No. But thank you for requesting that piece of property. I think it's going to be very useful for the hospital. Is there any cost to the city?
Cost of, I think it's $10 in the lease, or in the transfer, that's it. Yeah, cost of $10.
Thank you. Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. Thank you. I need a motion.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance 2019-19, is the application 1980, plat vacation. This is at the 405 Innis Drive. This is a second reading. This is a quasi-traditional. The City Attorney will read the title, and he will explain the quasi-traditional process.
This is ordinance 2019-19, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of two adjacent 5-foot-wide utility easements along the east side of Lot 3 and the west side of Lot 4 of Innis Point, Plat Book 141, page 13, "Providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date." This ordinance had been previously advertised in Tampa Bay Times on August 30th, 2019. This being a quasi-judicial proceeding, I'm going to read the procedures. "This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal..." established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, anyone that's going to speak on this item, if they could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Again, Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and staff for this application. Essentially, there's been no additional information since the first read of this application and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
No questions? No questions? Does the applicant here want to present?
The applicant is here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Cindy Terrapani, I'm representing the Marteri Family Trust who owns the property. Appreciate your support on first reading and hope that you'll support it on second reading. Just one clarification, the agenda item states that the address of the site is four oh five Innis Drive. That's actually where the Marteris live today. Where the easements are proposed to be vacated are eighty-one and eighty-three Innis Drive, further east on the same road, but it is a slight difference, I just want to point that out. I believe it was advertised correctly. That four oh five just happens to be where they live, not where the easements are to be vacated. I'm happy to answer any questions and I do appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else in the public that wants to step up and speak on this particular item? Seeing none, any summary that you wanted to give, Miss Heather? No? Miss Terrapani?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we can close the public hearing, Mayor, and it's back to the commission.
Thank you. Are there any commission comment? You're none? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is number fourteen, is to approve proposed site from mural and authorize execution of public artwork services agreement. Staff report.
Yes, I'll, Diane Wood's coming up first. We also have Joan Jennings, Chairman of the Art Committee here, and we have our esteemed artist, Ms. Indiana, in the audience and stuff, so they're both here. Diane, if you just go and go to the podium and bring forward this item from the public art and the board needs to approve it, the location, and then there's also the agreement with the artist that attached that was worked on by our city attorney and the artist, so.
Good evening, Diane Wood, Director for Cultural and Civic Services and Liaison for the Public Art Committee. In your your notes, one of the things that we have been working on and we present, the Public Art Committee presented to you in their yearly report, was that we wanted to do a historic mural by Elizabeth Indianos and that was approved by the Public Art Committee. And then we were seeking a site for that and we decided that it would, because it is so detailed and has so much information in it and it is a historic mural, the story of Tarpon Springs, and she's going to do quite a bit of research on that as well before she even starts painting. Because we are in the process of doing a beautiful renovation of the cultural center and will also be renovated inside as well, we thought that was the perfect location for this historic mural to bring a lot of attention to one of the most historic buildings that we have in Tarpon Springs, which is our first city hall. And so the site of it in your in your paperwork shows the, actually the two walls that are in the main gallery of the the cultural center and there's a doorway that separates it, but the the actual mural would span both walls and be, you know, pretty dramatic. And also, when Elizabeth is painting it, it would be wonderful to have the public actually come in and they can actually watch her, whoever's in the cultural center. So we're asking for your approval on the cultural center as a site and also the approval of her contract. It has been reviewed by, created by Mr. Trask and Elizabeth has also signed it, has been executed.
Thank you. Commission comment? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I do think this is a great piece that was once painted as a mural in Tarpon Springs and then it was, how would I say, painted over. It was a sad loss of this history and the artwork that was put into it. I'm excited that there's an opportunity to put this back in the community. I do feel that public art should be more in the public setting of outside and things along those lines. With the details, I understand this, that it would be protected inside, it's already been painted over once and to have it painted over a second time would be a tragedy and waste of taxpayers' dollars. So the one important thing is that it wouldn't be ruined in this building, which is an encouraging thing and, but I want to encourage the city and maybe the Public Art Committee could look at this as well. It was what we could do from a city standpoint is take a pictures of the finished artwork and look at some areas around Tarpon Springs, if there's a building owner that we could partner with or the city could partner with, to actually print this on a piece of canvas or some other mechanism to put it out in the public so it could be seen more regularly instead of just people attending the cultural center for an event or maybe a show of some sort. Because I think it's such a, it is such a great piece, it has so much history of Tarpon Springs itself. So if it is going inside, then I think it's pretty, really, really important to actually reproduce this somehow. I don't know, we've talked about this before on some type of different medium of some sort, if it's a canvas stretched over a piece of metal or if it's printed on similar type of material and then put up on the side of a building. I think that would be a good connection to really make sure the public sees this piece, especially for the amount of money that we're investing in this piece and the artworks and the artists' skills as well. I think it's important that we also share this further.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, thank you, Diane. It's a beautiful piece of arts and I think fifty thousand dollars is quite reasonable for the detail and I agree that it should be in the cultural center. I don't think it should be redone on canvas and put somewhere else because obviously that would cost more and and we're doing this inside to protect it. So I would agree with this and and think it's a good place to put it in and I think the cost is is good for what's going in there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think it's a great piece. I'm really excited to see it get done. I do believe that if we have the ability to, I'd like to see it on print and put out more publicly, if that's possible, just strictly because we're making a significant investment in this and it's such a great piece of artwork. As many people as that can see it as possible would be the best. But overall, I support this, so thank you.
Thank you. I am excited to see that we're going to have this mural, this phrase, the history and the culture of Tarpon Springs and I know Mrs. Indiana is a great artist and she will do a great job as she did in the past. And I agree with my colleagues that this is such an import to our to our city and art like this should be protected indoor, so I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Joan Jennings, twenty-two oh four Pine Drive, and I'm also Chair of the Public Art Committee. I want to thank all of the commissioners for their comments and for the approval of the project. It was presented as part of our annual report on June twenty-third and we've been working very actively, not only with Elizabeth, but with Diane and other members of the community to try to find an appropriate site for the mural. And I think Diane's solution is a perfect one because because of all the detail work and all of the many components of Tarpon his, Tarpon Springs history that's incorporated into the mural, I think the fact that it is inside allows people to go up and look at it in great detail. And we've been discussing with Elizabeth having a key that would explain who all of the different figures are, the flora, the fauna. So it would be basically create a history and natural science education piece as well as a piece of beautiful art. Whether it should be reproduced elsewhere, that I think is in the province of the artist because we run into copyright and other issues, but it's something we could certainly entertain going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Ms. Deanna, do you want to tell us something about it?
Elizabeth Indianos, twelve oh eight South Pinellas Drive. I'm really excited about doing this piece. We, or I I did it in in the seventies and nineteen seventy-seven, I think, is when it got started, with a lot of research from The History of Tarpon Springs by Gertrude Stoughton, the history book of Tarpon Springs. And old timers who grew up here and love Tarpon Springs certainly told me a lot of stories and and information. I'm very pleased that this site would be considered and hopefully approved because I think that the city investing in the value of long-term ownership really seems just perfect right now, being that the mural was painted over and that and wherever it would be, again, if we're, if it were outside, there would always be that short-term kind of view about it because the city wouldn't own the building. This has got a lot of gravitas to it, a lot of respect. You see murals like this in Washington DC in the Diplomatic Room, you see murals like this in Washington's home in Mount Vernon. In fact, the mural and artwork that I painted in back of the city hall commission chambers years ago now hangs permanently as an indoor public art piece in Tampa International Airport. And currently, the airport is going about picking pieces to be seen indoors, whether they're paintings or three-D sculptures. That's really a special place. So I'm very happy about this and feel like my stint as artist in residence many years ago, when I came here funded by the National Endowment for the Arts and the Florida Fine Arts Council to further expand and define the city of Tarpon Springs identity, this seems so fitting that now we're going to have a record of that for the city and everyone who lives here and it's very special to me.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? No public comments? I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number fifteen, the application nineteen dash zero one zero three, sale of a surplus property, Lake Street Parcels twelve dash twenty-seven, dance fifteen dash fifty-three thirty-five, two dash zero zero seven, that's zero four zero one, Bozart. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and staff to this particular application. This particular application is a request to purchase a piece of city-owned property that is landlocked within Luton Shore's subdivision. It's just a small piece that the city owns. What happened was it was a portion of a vacated right-of-way that was returned back to the city in the past. So the city actually owns it, but we actually own no access to it. The the property owner that is adjacent to this property, Mr. Bozart, has been working with staff on working on acquiring this particular piece of property so that he can move forward with some type of development to kind of consolidate his holdings so he doesn't have separation of city property and property on both sides. So with that, he has done a appraisal of the property and found that the the cost of that property would be one thousand two hundred dollars and he is offering that sum. That's the the basis for this request. If you have any questions, I can answer, I can try to answer them and the applicant is here.
Thank you. Heather, can you tell us how we ended up with this piece of property and it's kind like an island, it's covered with all the other properties belong to one person?
Sure. It was a piece of an original Lake Boulevard right-of-way that has been cut up and vacated over time. And so during the time when that was vacated, it was actually given to another property owner. That property subsequently did it back to the city. So the city has had it for some time on the records. We do not have physical access to it. It's just an outlying parcel and all the properties surrounding it are actually owned by the property owner, Mr. Bozart.
Thank you. Are there any commission comment?
I'm going to wait till after public comment.
Okay. Public comments, please. Are there any public comments on this item?
My name is Joyce Pappas. I live at two twenty High Street. My question, my parents bought this property from the original owner, Mr. Baker, who was the city manager at the time in nineteen sixty-six. Upon my mother's passing, I inherited the property in two thousand eight. It is adjacent to Live, like Lake Boulevard. My first concern is that the standard city procedure of notifying the property owners of any changes of property sell by the city or changes of uses of said property would be mailed before the issue would be voted or presented to the city council. In this case, we were not notified at all. And we would like to ask for a continuance of this issue to allow all the property owners to investigate our property rights and impact of our properties. Our second concern is the usage of the vacated road of Lake Boulevard. The residents of Lake Boulevard, actual addresses are listed as High Street. And the question would be, would their addresses now change when the Lake Boulevard is opened? Our third concern is the drainage flood problem that we are experiencing after each rainstorm. It seems that Mr. Bozart, Bozart, actions of depositing thirty truckloads of dirt, filled dirt on this property has made our flooding worse as shown on, I have pictures. And a notarized statement for Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Cooley, if you would like. And she couldn't be here because of family illness. Our property, for my property and the Georgiatus property, has been severely affected and impacted by this applicant. And also, he has offered, he has asked the Cooleys if they were interested in selling their home to the new owners of the property to enable them to live on Cooley property during the construction of their home. And then they have intended that after this, after their house is completed, that they would use it as a rental, which would further destabilize the integrity of our neighborhood, which has been a quiet neighborhood for many, many years. The fifth concern is that considering Vice Mayor Terrapani was a real estate agent for both of Mr. Bozart's property sales, he should recuse himself from the vote on this issue as it is a conflict of interest. As a lifelong resident of Tarpon Springs, I thank you for any cooperation or on this matter and appreciate any help that can contribute to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Crisula Gauze. I live on two oh eight High Street. Well, my husband- Well, my husband, Mr. Gauze, Robert Gauze, his uncle Roy actually owned the property, and he actually gifted it to the city of Tarpon Springs. So what we don't understand is why are they selling it? How can they sell it? Our driveway has been our driveway. It's never been a street. We have two homes on that driveway, and we have maintained it, the Georgiatuses and I, and us. There has never been any city coming in there, they haven't done anything. These trucks that actually went to put those 30 full trucks of dirt actually made dents and everything on actually our driveway, you know? So are you going to take care of the people that have been there for a long time? Because it's not, we don't have a wide enough area for two cars to pass. It's a driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is James Georgiatus, 200 High Street, Tarpon Springs. I noticed that on your application for this surplus property, you have down listed as Lake Street. So I don't believe this parcel, 122715, yada, 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 is on Lake Street, it's on Lake Boulevard. So I don't know if that means for cause of a continuance or just a mistake. I read also a letter from my attorney that says, "Mr. Bozart is just being an opportunist given the value of his property. Given the development of the potential it creates for his other lots is quite significant." He requested the city, the purchaser, to get an appraisal. I'm wondering if the appraiser noted that the significant land change would increase the property. I realize you have it down for $1,200. I think it's worth more. I insist that you already get another appraiser that will appraise the significant use of this property. Okay. I also have rights over Lot 34, an easement right. You also say that he has all the surrounding property. If you look at your map that was given to you, I believe that the Cooley property touches the far side of this green area, and so does Lot 33. I have an easement right over 34. I was told by the city attorney, or my attorney was told by the city attorney, that no, I can't submit a bid. How can that be? I did submit a bid. The city attorney rejected it. So it's my contention that we should have another look at this and delay it for another meeting so we can have all attorneys present. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Any other public comments on this item? Are there any other public comments on this item? You're none? Back to the Commission. Commissioner Seber had a question?
My question was...
The applicant would like to speak, if that's possible.
Hello, I didn't know if I should get up. I'm Jesse Bozart, 308 High Street. We bought a very difficult piece of land. It's several parcels. There's a nice old home, it's 120 years old. The land has been neglected for about eight years. We've come in, we fixed up the home, we have five children, me and my wife, and we use the land, and my kids run all over it. We have future plans, we're young, we do, we want to invest in Tarpon Springs, and this was our opportunity to invest. This piece of property is about 40 feet long and about 25 feet wide. It's in the middle of my property, so it just makes sense that we buy it, we own it, so that, you know, if we want to pull a permit. Right now, I already, I take care of it. I mow it, I do what needs to be done on it. You guys are okay, I have no problem doing it. And I did, I'm the one who came to the city and asked them if, how, how do I purchase this? Because we knew it was, it was there, and it just makes sense for us to own it, just to complete our property, because we're 365 degrees around, or 360 degrees around it. We own all the touching land. But thank you very much for hearing this.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? You already spoke, sir. You already spoke. Are there any other public comments on this item? You're none, thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yeah, I, there's several questions because of different statements that were made, but I see that there was no survey done on this property. So there was no survey done, and it shows on the land appraisal that this property has limited market appeal. Looking at where that property is, I really would like to see maybe even the city to appraise it, and since it belongs to the city, and a survey to be done. So I feel like there's a lot of questions to be answered before we vote on this tonight. And as Ms. Papa said, I believe that we should have a continuance on it.
Thank you. Any other question? Comment? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, so I just wanted to understand the logic a little bit better here. The reason that the neighbors weren't contacted via mail or anything like that is just because the property owner owns all of the surrounding property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, can you shed some light? I know they mentioned that they might have an easement on one of those current properties. Is that true?
So the answer is, I don't know the answer to that question. The individual, it's my understanding, the individual was given an opportunity to provide any ownership interest documents that he had, according to the city manager. My discussion with the city manager, that was never done, he never provided. He, first of all, said he had an ownership interest. I found out through his lawyer, his lawyer advised me that, no, it wasn't an ownership interest, it was an easement interest. And obviously, you don't want to be selling city property if someone has an easement interest. You're going to run into that situation we had about 15 or 20 years ago in a county where people are buying up little tiny pieces of property off of tax deed sales, and then they basically can hold that over your head for any further development of your property. People are buying lakefronts, fence lines, and everything else. And so, you know, my position along with the city managers is, is that that is not something that you want to be doing, is giving someone an opportunity to leverage another property owner. Since he is the only property owner that is adjacent to this land, he is the only appropriate person that should be buying this property. Either that or it should remain, you know, in city hands. That was my position as the city attorney, so that you couldn't, you wouldn't have to deal with issues of disputes between property owners in the future. So I did have a conversation with his lawyer by way of email and advised him of that. And when I told, when I asked him if there was an ownership interest and he provided, he responded no, then that was my answer, you know, that the city would not be entertaining offers, purchase offers, from someone who doesn't own an adjacent parcel. As for your question relative to, well, the question that has been raised as to whether or not someone needs to be noticed, there is a provision in your code that specifically requires, and I'll just read the one sub-paragraph, "In matters involving the sale of real property, adjacent property owners shall be provided notice of the proposed sale by means of a certified letter mailed to the property owner's address." So if every adjacent property owner happens to be this individual that you're hearing today here as the applicant, then that's as much as the notice is required under your code.
Okay, thank you. And I did just want to verify, I mean, the land appraisal report is signed by a licensed and registered appraisal company, correct? I mean, it seemed, I mean, it looks... Everything's in order with the land appraisal report, right?
I believe so, as the city attorney, and, you know, you've got an individual who is basically, as an expert in the field, giving his opinion, so we can obviously spend more money and get another appraisal. But I don't see that that's necessary. You've got, you've got a report in front of you, which of course, you did not pay for. The applicant paid for that, as required by your code.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, oh, sorry.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. I'm seeing on the appraisal report that there was no survey done or soil or subconditions looked at, so it says no survey provided to the appraiser for final verification. So what does that mean? Do they not need a survey?
Your code does not require a survey. Your code requires an appraisal.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. Also, further on, it talked about where the end of the street was, was at 308 or 38? And, you know, I went out there and looked at it, the street kind of ends right at the property line and the fence line of 33. So there is no street going to these other properties.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Still think we need to revisit this.
I also have a few questions that I'd like to ask, based on the comments that they made earlier. We say that we have no physical access to this property.
You are not named in the easement that is currently over the property from the edge of Lake Street. Lake Street ends at the edge of between 34, the property on between 34 and 33. There is a distance there that you do not have physical access to. That is not a road. That is actually part of Mr. Bozart's property.
The other question that I have, based on the comments, is, has been created a flood problem in there? Can somebody explain that?
I can't speak to the, to any kind of flooding issues. That's something that we would have to verify with the building official, because I'm not aware of any dirt going in there. There's no permit that I have, that I have on this. There may be a valid permit in the building permit department, but that's, it's, that's not something that's come through planning, so I can't speak to that.
Mr. Attorney, as you said earlier, no survey, it was completed. How did the, actually, the appraiser came up with a $1,200? Yeah, gee.
The only thing I can tell you is, is that, and maybe Heather or the city manager would have some input on it, but it has a parcel ID number, and it used the parcel ID number through the property appraisers' records to determine length and width and its location, and use that as the basis for the appraisal.
Thanks, Mayor. Unique situation, I would have to say for sure, but looking at this, there is an appraisal, Commissioner Donovan brought this up, that it's signed, sealed by a certified appraisal ethics and other committees. I mean, they could be suspended and removed of license if they have done that before. I've questioned these in the past, and I've been answered with the same answer, is they can't falsify under risking their license, they're risking their license at that point. So with that, looking at the property, yes, if it was a buildable lot that was zoned, buildable, and it was actually a lot that you could build on by itself, would it be worth more? Absolutely. But since it's only 25 feet wide, I don't think there's any zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, that you could build a house or some type of property on that specific lot without other, other abutting property to add to it.
Agreed. Under your current zoning schema, there is no zoning code that you would be able to issue a permit on this, and where's the physical access? Without Jesse's property, you don't have physical access to a right-of-way. So you can't meet the current conditions to get a building permit.
Okay. To me, I sympathize for the individuals that live on Lake Boulevard. I think I would like to recommend, at least, that the city look at next year's budget and how we can partner with these homeowners to help with the driveway slash road. I don't know if it's considered a paper road today, or if it's actual road. It sounds like it's more of a driveway than a road. But if we could budget some funds in the paving budget, or budget some funds to help out with the drainage in that area, I think that would be beneficial to the property owners in that area. Since it's owned solely by Mr. Bozart all around, I don't have a problem supporting this piece of property, moving forward with it tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other, permission comment?
I'd like to know whether the applicant has any plans to extend that driveway so his property is accessible.
I'd be glad to have the applicant come up, if you want to hear from the applicant.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Are you planning on extending that Boulevard or that driveway, it's only as wide as the driveway, to go to your properties that you're talking about?
Well, my property technically does touch the road, the pavement.
But there's no access to, you know, what you want to purchase.
It'd be access over my property. It just, it would complete it. I don't have any in-solid plans yet, but this would be the step one, to move to step two. Because these, these are waterfront lots, it's, we eventually want to build down there, build a house, me and my wife, maybe in 20 years, when our kids grow out, you know, get out of the house, that we can have access down there, we can build and do more things. So we would, we would, we would have, we would have to pit some kind of pavement in or concrete or pavers or something in to access that piece of land that we're trying to buy, yes. We would, that, it would just, it would complete that parcel.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I just saw where the, you know, the, that lane or that driveway ends at Mr. Georgiatus', Georgiatus's property, and wondered if you plan on continuing the driveway or the road, or wanted to do something like that to access that property.
Yes, we will eventually. We'll, eventually, we'll want to pull permits and do everything right and do what we need to do to, for the future development, so we could get to that property. But that, that is, that right now, we use it every once in a while to just drive over the grass. We just, to get to the back of my house, I take that way, is the best way. If not, then I'm driving all over pavers and stuff at my house that I shouldn't be driving over. So that's the only way, that's the only access to the back of my property, is off of Lake Boulevard there.
Okay. I've seen it quite flooded on that property, so I don't know how you plan on taking care of that problem, but to add a driveway.
Yeah, we've been having some, a lot of rain, a lot of flooding issues right now. There's, the tide comes in and the rain has just been not letting up.
Thank you. Any other commission comment?
Can I just say one other thing?
Of course.
I just wanted to remind you tonight, you have four members here of the Board of Commissioners in under section 2-216, Ren A2 of your code. It provides, "Any contract or other agreement for the purchase, sale, exchange, conveyance, or leasing of real property or any interest thereon for some less than $250,000 shall require approval by affirmative vote of four members of the Board of Commissioners." So it's going to require a unanimous vote tonight, or it to pass. You need all four of you to pass it.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
I would like to entertain a motion that we defer this.
Would be a motion to postpone?
Right.
You will have a second.
Can I have clarification on a little bit more why you want to defer it and a date that you're looking for?
Well, you know, I just, I'm torn here, because I understand what the applicant wants, but I also understand these neighbors having to worry about the extension of their driveway to that property. Also, Mr. Georgiatus has access to Lot 34, which is adjacent to 33 that he owns. So I just, you know, have some questions about all that.
I'm assuming you don't feel comfortable tonight supporting this?
Well, I would say no tonight.
I'll second the motion to defer, if you could provide a date for defer.
What is the date you want it postponed to?
I would probably say, first meeting in October.
That'd be the second week.
That would be the eighth.
Oh, dear.
What's wrong with it coming back next meeting? If we have all the information that we're going to get on it?
I would like to see a survey.
Well, I think... Well, I think it makes sense to, uh, have some more research.
I just don't know what more research, um, the applicant, the applicant's going to put together. Cause we're deferring it for a later date, but we're not telling him to get a survey or anything like that. So I feel like all the information we have in front of us tonight or at the next meeting, I understand deferring it because, um, we're, we're missing our vice mayor tonight, but I don't understand postponing it, uh, for longer than we need to.
I'm not sure if our vice mayor would be able to vote because he has an interest in this property. Or there might be a conflict, so I, I wondered about that.
Well, as the seat attorney stated, that we must have a super majority on this vote anyway.
Right.
What I said was, as was stated by the seat attorney, we must have a super majority on that.
Yep. I, I mean, I've got enough information to make a decision tonight, but I think it's clear that Commissioner Seaver would like some more. So, um, that's why I'm supporting the deferral.
All right, so we have, uh,
And I would just ask like Commissioner Donovan, I don't know what more staff can give you. So if there's something you want the applicant or somebody else, I just don't know.
Be specific on what you're looking for at the next hearing so that we can provide whatever it is that you need.
I would like a survey and I would like to know about that easement that, that abuts, uh, lot number 33 that, that, uh, resident has access to.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to defer that, uh, item 15 to, uh, October the 8th. We have a second as well. Roll call, please.
Can I ask for clarification? Who, who's going to be doing the survey? Is the city doing the survey or the applicant? Because then you're asking for additional.
I would say we have to advise the applicant. If you want a survey, that we have to ask the applicant to provide a survey.
Okay. That's not needed in my eyes, but I mean, like I said, I've got enough to vote yes on this tonight. But if you feel that that's something that you need to vote yes or something for additional information before we make a yes or no decision, then that's what we need to do.
Well, you know, I, it has limited market appeal. It says in this appraisal, there's been no survey done. I don't think it has limited market appeal, so I, I'm, you know, I'm questioning this, uh, this appraisal. So I think the survey would help, uh, maybe another appraisal.
Wait, so are we, are we now asking to get a second appraisal?
No, we're not. That's not part of the motion.
Okay. Cause I, I think good with this appraisal. I mean, it was done by a licensed appraiser, um, at an actual appraisal company. So just so we're clear, you're going to have the applicant go back and get a survey before we make a decision on this in October?
That's what I'm requesting.
And you cannot vote, um, anything but no on this without the survey, correct?
Yes, tonight my vote would be.
Commissioner Donovan, as it was explained by the city attorney, you must have a super majority. So you have to have unanimous. So the best thing to do is to postpone it.
I understand. I was just clarifying.
And we already have a motion and a second. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Marla, who's this?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the application 19 dash 100, license to encroach H hours Creel Smokehouse, 310 East Tarpon Avenue, staff report.
Uh, thank you again, planning and zoning director and staff to this particular application. This is a request, um, that came out of apparently an era that I think the, um, applicant's representative can actually speak to what actually occurred. So I'll let him talk to that during his presentation. But essentially what's being requested is this application for improvements to the home, it wasn't originally home, wasn't recently, most recently the KZQ barbecue. They actually want to open a Creel restaurant here and do some improvements to the front of the property. When they did their survey, there was a discrepancy apparently in the survey. What they brought forward to, um, the HBB board was approved with these stairs and things present so that they could access the property. So you could step up, go into the patio area that wasn't really well, um, defined during, when KZQ was in there, but they're doing some really, really nice improvements there, really creating a patio space, an area for like entertaining and, and kind of gathering. And then you would go, then go up into the porch and then into the restaurant. In order for them to access that, that, that second, that first tier of the property, they really need a step up. So in order for that to happen, there is an area between where your current sidewalk is and their edge of their property where they would put, um, basically two risers. So it'd be two sets of two stairs, um, to access that patio area. Um, so they've come before us to ask for a license to encroach so that they don't have to completely redesign their property and address moving those stairs up onto their property. Cause if they do that, there's some issues with, they're going to be delayed in their development, um, to do that. So they've asked for us, um, for this license to encroach because we're not impacting the sidewalk and there is area, we're talking 84 square feet. That's where these stairs are going for. And there's area between that property line and the actual pedestrian path for your sidewalk. There is no real impact. It's, it's, it's open area anyway. So staff looked at this and we worked with, um, the public works department and the fire department to kind of work through the issues in the building division, um, to kind of look at if there was any kind of issues. Everyone agreed that there really isn't an issue to request this license to encroach. So staff is supporting the license to encroach. What you have with you is an agreement that the applicant is asking for this relief of 84 square feet essentially in your public right-of-way that isn't going to impact the pedestrian, um, right-of-way. There is a group of conditions that are actually on the back of your staff report that are in the agreement as well. Um, and I'll read those recommendations or these, these, um, conditions into the record. The stairway must receive a permit from the city's building, um, development department prior to construction. The sidewalk shall be maintained undisturbed with clear, unobstructed ADA compliant pedestrian travel path along the entire frontage of the owner's property. Any damage to the sidewalk shall be repaired by the grantee, um, at the grantee's expense. Um, city staff, uh, shall be allowed access for any, for future inspections. The encroachment area is to be maintained in good condition, free from any trash and debris. The entire encroachment area must be maintained at the guarantee's expense. Should the city desire to terminate the agreement, the grantee will have 30 days to remove the stairway. No private utilities will be extended through the encroachment area and the city shall have no responsibility relocate or main, relocate or maintain any utilities, um, within the encroachment area. There are no utilities in the area, but essentially if we have to put utilities in the area, we're not going to relocate them for their stairway. So essentially those are the conditions and, um, I can answer any questions that you might have. And we do have a representative from the, for the applicant here that can kind of speak a little bit more specific to the project if you have questions.
Thank you. I have a question. Actually, I'm just curious. This property has changed ownership several times. How come is this survey discrepancy was never found?
I'm going to let the applicant speak to that because I can't really answer that. I wasn't part of that, to those discussions.
Hi, I'm Bob Ray with Hoffman Architects, 29 West Orange Street, Tarpon Springs, and a project architect for it. The survey, uh, discrepancy is, I guess you could say it was a misunderstanding between what the surveyor put down and the way we read it. It was a five-foot discrepancy on the, this width of the front yard from the edge of the porch to the, uh, city sidewalk and to where the property line is. So it was like a five-foot difference.
Yeah.
And the other thing that kind of impacted this was, uh, grade elevation wasn't exactly what we thought it was either. We had intended to put a, uh, sloping, slightly sloping, uh, sidewalk. The sidewalk would cross, of course, from the city sidewalk into this courtyard anyway. And so now we're just asking to have a couple of steps to do the same thing.
And do you agree with the, uh, uh, conditions recommended by the staff?
I believe we do, yes.
Any commission comment?
I mean, we need, they need to have a safe access from the city sidewalk to the property for the people to come to the establishment. Uh, I think it's a no-brainer to go ahead and move forward with this one.
Yeah, I definitely agree. Uh, it's looking beautiful, by the way, and, uh, thank you for your experience and, and making it look so great because it's, I'm anxious for it to open. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan? No, no. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mike Kuskudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. The only comment I would make is I drive on my way to the office every day and I see this building and I see how it's basically transformed. Um, and they've done a heck of a job. Hoffman, uh, well, y'all did a heck of a job designing it and I, I think, uh, you know, it's just an attraction that's going to become another attraction for downtown Tarpon. So for that, I, I would encourage y'all to support this, this particular request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Thank you. And it looks, the restaurant is beautiful. Thank you very much. Motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Marla, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 17 is the application 1987 is the appeal of, uh, CA 19 dash 77 for St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral. This is the, uh, located the 20 North Pinellas Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening. Again, it's me, planning and zoning director's staff to this application. Essentially what occurred with this application is, um, your heritage, um, preservation board heard, um, CA 70, or 1977 for exterior renovations to a contributing structure at, uh, 20 North Pinellas Avenue. Um, at that hearing, they recommended denial of the application and the applicant has subsequently, um, asked for an appeal of that decision which comes to this board. So, um, staff has laid out basically the facts of the case for you and put together the packet that went to HBB with staff's analysis, the minutes which are in draft form. Unfortunately, this, these come very quickly. So the HB doesn't actually approve their minutes before you see them, so they're in draft form. And, uh, the letter from the applicant stating, um, their reasons for the appeal. And then we've also asked the city's attorney's office to provide, um, their, um, opinion as well, um, based on the decision of the, not so much the decision, but based on the, uh, letter of the applicant. So that's what you have here in your packet, just laid out with a, just a basic timeline to kind of tell you what's happening. Staff doesn't make a recommendation on these, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is present. We have, um, an audience who would probably like to speak to this application, so I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you. Uh, any questions to Heather? We have many people waiting to speak on this item, so we're going to go to the public comments. Are there any public comments on this?
Well, I, I don't know if it's a public comment or I represent the applicant, so I don't know if you have to hear me first or is this considered a public comment?
It'd be good to hear from the applicant first.
Okay. Um, if, it is part of the city's package, uh, I, I hope everybody had a chance to le, to read the letter or, or the appeal that was submitted, uh, to the, to the city. So I, I, nodding yes, I, I would imagine everybody did. And I received, after looking through the, the city's response, I did in fact, uh, have a chance to look at the memorandum provided by the city attorney, uh, wherein he indicated that, uh, as much as part of the appeal, just so you know, you know, looking at, looking at the code, it says if you disagree with, with the board's decision, you have a right to appeal. So we did. So our letter is the appeal. Um, and then looking at this, the, uh, city's memorandum, he indicated that one of the, uh, issues that, that was subject to the appeal was the removal of the property as a contributing structure. If that was the case, that I would have to follow under the code, uh, section 102, they could C through I. And, uh, and as much as I've, I had a chance to go look at that part of the code, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Trask's interpretation of part of that appeal. However, however, okay. It does, and the city does have the right, um, absent going through the request to have it removed, which the city commission would be allowed to remove it had I, had they submitted a different type of application. And I think Mr. Trask could, would agree that had this applicant been, uh, requesting a removal for, from the, uh, historical preservation board, um, we would, we would not be probably here because that would, uh, allow us to, to appeal that particular request at the historical preservation board, the removal of that property. That was not argued. Even though I, we believe that that was an error to have this property included as part of a, of a contributing structure. But what the petitioner did request, and this Board of Commissioners has the right to overrule, is the denial by the heritage preservation board of the applicant of the exterior renovations that were requested. Um, and that, and I, and I hang my hat on part of the code under section B. A, let's talk about the property first. The property has no semblance of any historical property. The windows are not historical, the doors are not historical. The picture that's provided by the city is not even accurate, uh, representation of the way the structure looks now. The awnings, uh, are no longer there. The properties south of that are not historic. The properties across the street are not historic. The only thing that's historic where that property is, is the cathedral. And the church is looking to make improvements to the property that it would allow the church to, to use its property for, for religious purposes. Under 108, section B, which provides certain properties which include cemeteries, birthplaces, properties owned by religious institutions or used for religious purposes, structures that have been removed from their original locations, properties commemorative in nature and properties that have been, that have achieved significant, significance within the last 50 years will not normally be considered for designation. Okay. Such properties will qualify, however, if they are integral parts of the districts that do meet the criteria if they fall within the following categories. If you look through categories one through six, this property does not apply. Which, the way I look at this, is that property should have not been considered for designation. As such, this Board of Commissioners has a right to overturn or reject the heritage preservation board's findings. Because it doesn't fall within the category J of section 102, subsection, what is it? Section 102 J. I'm here to answer any questions, by the way, that the city may have.
I have no question.
I'll stand by in case there are any responses.
I have a, I have a question, actually. Mr. Kuskudis, thank you for, um, being here tonight and, can I just understand the request then? Are you requesting that the Board of Mission review the denial because you feel that the site shouldn't have been designated as a historic place still? Is that what it is?
It, whether you remove it, it, whether you remove it as a contributing structure or not, obviously, and again, I don't disagree with Mr. Trask's analysis that we would have to have petitioned this board for a removal as a designated, as a designated contributing structure. What I'm saying is the board erroneously denied our request based on the fact that the, the, the structure itself had gone through so many changes. We are, we were requesting through, through the permitting process, an opportunity to renovate the property. And we were, and the city, with, it went through all the departments, uh, and it was and it was approved by all the departments with the exception of having to come in front of the Historical Preservation Board, who said, "No, you can't do it." So I don't know if that answered your question.
Okay.
What we're looking to do is to...
Can I just ask for a clarifying? I just want to make sure I want to understand what you're doing.
Provide exterior renovations.
That's what you're appealing that to the board, correct?
Correct.
Not necessarily, you're not appealing that it should not be part of a contributing structure? You're not appealing anything along those lines, right?
Well, again, in looking at Mr. Trask's analysis, is that he's not saying that this commission can't overturn the decision of the Historical Preservation Board. What Mr. Trask is saying is that if our request is to have it removed as a contributing structure, there's a different process.
That's correct.
Okay. And what I'm saying is I understand that's a different process. But the code also says I have a right to appeal. I have a right to appeal to summarize my request for why they were wrong. And so if you want to know, I shotgunned it because there's a lot of reasons why. Okay? Removal is just one of them. But there are other reasons that this commission can overturn the Historical Preservation Board's decision as a fact that it should be allowed, the church should be allowed to renovate that property. And let's be honest, that property has fallen down. It's not being used. The church can utilize it for its religious purposes, and I think it has a right to do so. You know, when you look at the criteria under section B, you know, it talks about the conditions wherein, let me find it here. The conditions where that property would be considered for designation, even though it might be a religious property. If it, and I go list one through six. Obviously, most of those don't apply because it's not a cemetery. There's nothing that's achieving significance within the last fifty years of its exceptional importance. There's nothing exceptionally important about this property. You know, it's the birthplace or a grave of a historical figure.
Excuse me, Commissioner Carr, did you get the answer that you were looking for?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
All right, I won't continue then.
Next person.
I consider you friends, and I know right from wrong. My name's Annie Samarcos, thirty-two West Tarpon Avenue. I was on a committee with some of you. We walked that property before three of you in this audience took it upon yourself to demolish the interior of that building that you don't own. Okay, it had apartments. That's part of its historical designation. It had two apartments upstairs, storefront downstairs. And then I wrote something somebody in the audience was going to read for me tonight because I felt like I have to stay out of this. But the building is designated by the federal government as a contributing building. That means its architecture has importance and contributes to the historic district designation that our city qualifies for from the National Historic Register. If we chip away at our contributing buildings, we would be chipping away at what makes our community unique. Keep in mind that our community's uniqueness and history is what brings tourists to visit, and that is a huge part of our economy in town. That's all. Sorry.
Thank you.
Harry Andropoulos. I own two properties in the downtown area. I'm also speaking for Mr. Kappas, who also owns property in the downtown area. I'd like to encourage this board to grant the appeal and make this building something that's nice in our streetscape instead of a derelict that it is. It no longer looks like anything that would possibly be used really. There's no point in having a store there anymore. And the apartments are gone, and the apartments were gone before the church did anything with that. So, yeah, the other thing is too, the door is flat against the front, so. The point is it's no longer part of that streetscape. None of the other buildings really match anything else. As a property owner, as property owners, I would really like to encourage that building to be improved and done appropriately, making it part of the campus of the cathedral, I think is an improvement. The whole area will still maintain its historic designation. We're not asking for it to be taken off. But it needs to be remodeled. Otherwise, frankly, it's just going to fall into disrepair and ruin, and the city might as well have something that's good. The other thing too that I wanted to bring up is the church's use of it. It's going to be used as a chapel. And in this chapel, there's going to be housed many relics that the church has accumulated and has been promised over the years. So this is going to be a place that all people can come and venerate these relics. They're relics of the saints, of the Orthodox Church, and even all of the Christian churches. So it's a very nice thing, and it will be open to the public. And it's actually, we're turning something that's a derelict into something that will really be a positive thing for the community. So I'd like to encourage you to grant our appeal at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, honorable commissioners, good friend, Chief Cochin. My name is Nikitas Manis. I'm the president of the Parish Council of St. Nicholas Cathedral, Archon of the Ecumenical Patriarch of Constantinople and New Rome. I come before you to thank you for listening to our appeal. As you know, St. Nicholas Community has been mandated in Tarpon Springs since the beginning. We have a process for the last two years. We had a donor come to us and ask that we be able to convert that building, as we called it, it was the Neftin Building and Boubinell's Restaurant at the time. And if I remember right, Mayor Alahuzza helped when we were having problems with the sewage that came in and devastated the whole building. The parish does not have any intention of fixing the building if it's denied. We feel that the chapel will go well with the campus of the St. Nicholas Cathedral. It will improve Boubinell's Restaurant. And we look forward to helping the community as make it look better. I mean, we don't, I understand the laws, the city attorney, I know all the codes. All you need to do is walk by there. And as I tell you, the community of St. Nicholas is not going to put in a dime if this fails. I thank you for your consideration, and we hope and pray that you allow us to proceed with our project. Thank you.
Good evening. Anita Prost, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. I was at the Historic Preservation Meeting. They went by the rules and regulations of Historic Preservation in the state of Florida. The attorney explained it explicitly to the audience why they could not approve it. Many books have been written about Tarpon Springs, the Greek heritage, how the Spongers worked, gave money to build that church, how the little old ladies would give their quarters and fifty cents instead of getting an extra loaf of bread. They wanted that church. This is a book y'all have never seen. They're hard to get. And it tells about the marble that's in the church from the World's Fair. It tells about the gifts and all the money that was sent to Tarpon Springs, not only by Greeks, Jewish, Catholic, all religions to help the Spongers build that church. When they designed the church, they told the architect to set it back from the road so they would have standing room before they go up to the cathedral. When it was named a cathedral, Kathy Monahan was in the city. Kenny Henderson wrote the grants. We went after the Historic Preservation. Three years of work, three years of work. In the sixties, the Colleman Society came up, and they wanted to put something there in that building for the patron saint of Gomos. When they found out what we were doing, they pulled back. Church had money then because when it was named historic, Kenny Henderson wrote grants, and we got over $200,000 to fix the building, use on the church. Nothing was done. We don't know where the money went. Yes, it is true, sir. I don't lie. You weren't here. Then, when I was mayor, Mr. Cantonas came to me, and he said, "I'd like to do something for Seemy." When we told him it's Historic Preservation, he pulled back. He gave a check. He gave money. I know that for a fact. Don't wave your hand that it's not true, and it wasn't done. So, no, wait a minute. Let me tell you. You fuss at me all the time, but you let everybody else speak that word.
Yeah, but just address the board, not the audience, please.
Yes, but you let others do it. But they can't raise a hand to me that I don't know what I'm talking about because I do, because we worked on it. We got the Historic Preservation Destination. That's what we advertise Tarpon about, our historic. It's that property right there, the block, the district. Talking to Tallahassee, we can't lose our historic destination. I'm sorry that Kathy Monahan isn't here or Kenny Henderson to be able to talk more about it. We've got something beautiful. And the buildings on the, as you go down the street, like the Geneska's building, it wasn't altered. They've been painted. They've been cleaned up. They've had money to restore that building. There was supposed to be a bookstore in there in the honor of Rene Salabares. It didn't get there. Money was put in when she passed away, sent to the church for the bookstore. I don't know anything about their finances. I'm not trying to fight the church. I had a board member tell me to get out of the church. I told that board member, "I'll be here a lot longer than you will, and you don't know anything about how the church was built." And I resent that because I belong there too. But the problem is if we lose our Historic Preservation, what are we going to have? Every community fights to keep their Historic Preservation. The facade that they want, the bell tower, the jut out of the building to put relics, it's going to go into the property of St. Nicholas. Why should we allow this to step on the toes and the feet of our historic, beautiful church? I commend the man, Mr. Dennis Kappas, who wants to build it, but take it off the street, put it where it belongs with shrubberies and trees, find a piece of property and build it. We've turned down others, and we should be turning down this now. Our identity is Tarpon Springs. We elected you to take care of our community and the treasures of this community. And the church is one of the treasures and our Historic Preservation there. A lot of people own property, but it's not all in Historic Preservation.
Thank you very much.
And they're stepping on the graves of our Sponge divers and the families who put the money in to build that church. It should go elsewhere.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Palaidis. I live in Oakley Village. I'm a citizen of Tarbo Springs since September twenty ninety-eighty. And all this time, I volunteer and I try to make our city to look better, including our church, Shepherd Center, and all these organizations. We didn't come here to discuss what, I know, with all due respect to former mayor Anita.
Mr. Palaidis, just address the board, please. Don't talk about...
With due respect to Anita and to my friend Anna Samarcos, we didn't come here to discuss what happened. What I'm asking all of you is today is September the tenth. Tomorrow is nine eleven, two thousand nineteen. We are here to work together to make our city to look better, to be better for the future generations. And I go further, I was here on the last meeting, for the Preservation Meeting, and I listened to them. And after the next day, I start inviting residents in Tarbo Springs around town, around town, town there, including city officials. I even invite commissioners, everybody to see the place, what is the place? Because all of us make decisions without seeing the physical appearance of the place. And I never heard a negative remark because these people, men and women, they went inside, they see how is the inside, they just don't look the outside. Even the outside is not what is right, what used to be. Two thousand ninety, twenty, ninety, thirty, ninety, forty, ninety, fifty. It's completely a building there. But I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at two nineteen, going inside there. You'll be surprised and shocked for our discussion here. We have our commission talking for our chef for what? We try to make our city to look better. Besides, this is going to be a chapel, like my friend Harry said, and where people are going to go there to see some lyrics. They're going to be a complement to the cathedral, and people are going to go there for seclusion and prayer. And the whole area is going to look a lot better as it is right now. What I want to say to all of you, as all of you have heard that before, we are all responsible for whatever we do. But we are so responsible whatever we don't say. And this is remarked to the committee, and I make a recommendation to Mr. Lekouris, who's not looking at me. Remarked to him to give some advice to the, or recommendation to the Preservation Committee. Some special cases like that or some other buildings, they don't need to look only the outside. They need to go inside, and that good for everybody of us. Everybody that went to that building changed their mind. They look at the place, this is day and night, when we fixed it, when I saw the plans. So I like all of you to think about it. And what with your hand in the heart, looking, thinking Tarbo Springs. The other thing I want to say to you, there is an old Greek saying, ancient saying, "We ate the elephant and left the tail." The committee's, and that is good for all of you. When you subject like that, it'd be nice to go to see the place in and out so you can make a very Samsung decision, right decision. So please, don't push us back. The Greek community in Tarbo Springs, over one-third of the city's Greek community, they are all shocked and very upset. Maybe five percent, like my friends, they are not. But the majority, they are upset, and they wonder what is wrong with the Preservation Committee. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
As the applicant, I'd like to respond to some of the comments.
Mr. Kuskoudis? We have people wanting... Thank you.
Nicholas Athanasatos, four five one Silver Moss Lane. I've been, I consider myself a member of this community for my whole life, I suppose. All twenty-one years. And I don't see, I see many landmarks here. I see many historical buildings and many things that we must preserve here. And this is a building that I do not believe is one of them. We have a lot of treasures. I don't think this is one of them. What we are asking, what our church is asking, and a lot of my peers, a lot of my fellow Orthodox members are asking is that we are allowed to build this chapel, which would mean so much for us as a religious landmark. All over Greece, all over America, we are constantly building religious structures. And for us, it is not enough to have just a cathedral. It is great that we have our cathedral, but we are a growing population. And it is always important for us to glorify God in every way possible. And having this chapel in this location is the way that we believe we can glorify God in the best possible way. And I do speak on behalf, I think I speak on behalf of many individuals of our church and our parish, many individuals I've known my whole life that would love to see this happen. I know a lot of people would say the youth always want to look away from the past. And I'm actually thinking about two hundred years from now, one hundred years from now, people looking back onto this day, this time and saying, "Look at this beautiful structure that we have now been preserving for so long, this beautiful chapel that I'm hoping goes into this place." And for this chapel to be preserved for a while. This building right now that is in question is desolate. It's not a historical building of Tarpon Springs. It is, but I mean, it's not what we want it to be. It is not what we want the future to remember. And I think of myself as someone that does not like to forget about the past. And I believe that by putting this chapel here, we can proceed into a future where we are proud of the past that we're preserving. So I implore you guys to please consider allowing us to put this religious structure in this position. It is something that is very dear to us and has a lot of religious meaning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Sure, come forward. Mr. Kouskoudis, we still have people wanting to speak.
I'm moving. Be patient, will you? Bad back, I can't sit too long.
Anna Beliris, 872 West Bay Shore Drive in Tarpon. I just would like for the record to say that our General Assembly approved this project. So we are representing the parish of St. Nicholas. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Mr. Sisai, if you're gonna speak, would you please come forward? Thank you.
George Stammas, 979 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. And a member of the St. Nicholas Cathedral. So one of the things that we're talking about is how we get to the appeal that we're trying to make here tonight. And, you know, whether we maybe stepped off bounds by asking for a removal as part of our appeal, or whether we're just asking you to grant the request to do the renovation. I think the fact of the matter is, when we went before the Heritage Preservation Board, it was documented that we stated that the building was in disrepair and probably did not meet the standards for a contributing structure anymore. I don't know if that gives us standing for the appeal that we've asked for, you know, because some of the relief that you could give in that type of an argument is to remove it, or you could probably just agree with us that it doesn't really represent a contributing structure anymore, and then grant the relief of letting us move forward with the project. I think everybody who's looked at it probably agrees that the building is in bad disrepair, doesn't resemble the building that was studied and included in the contributing structure list back in, what, 1980-something? It's changed quite a bit. I think it would be much better for the city and for the surrounding area to be used as a chapel that ties in with the church campus and something that we could all be proud of and on the street. The building's an orphan right now, when you look at it and the surrounding buildings, there's no other contributing structures that haven't been severely altered that surround this building or the streetscape that it's on. So our request is that you please grant our request to allow us to move forward with the chapel project and renovations that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Costas Sisai. I live 516 Wayfair Drive. I was president the last year in the church. I am on the board about 33 years. And I was vice president for the church for 27, 28 years. And I'm a very active person, and everybody knows me, about the whole community, about the Greek parades, about the festivals, and anything in this town. So, and the church should not make this chapel to make money or to make business. We do this chapel, it's a small area in case we got a small liturgist. Five, 10 people, we use this property. So, another thing, historical properties around this building, the only historical property is the church. And we got about two times grant, like somebody mentioned before here, and one time $250,000, another time about $25,000, something like this. So, I don't wanna say too much, but I come to say to you, please, think about it, because the whole community is very happy to see this chapel going on and looking better, the whole area around the church. That's what I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment? Do we have any other comment? Mr. Kouskoudis, you got something else that you...
No, we're done. I think Ms. Beliris said what I was gonna say, that this was not done in a vacuum. You know, this went in front of the parish council multiple times. It was approved by the parish council, and it was unanimously approved by the, I mean, the parish, the parish, it was unanimously approved by the parish council. So this was not done in a vacuum.
Thank you. I'm asking again if there's any other public comments on this item. Now, we are now going to our commission comments. Commission Cora.
I've got a couple of questions for the applicant, again, if that's okay.
Sure.
Mr. Kouskoudis, the architecture is obviously a little bit different than what the Greek church's design is, and then also the community and the surrounding areas. How did we, how did the church, or how did you all come up with this?
It's a Byzantine, it's a Byzantine structure. In order, we just, again, things like this are not done in a vacuum. It actually has to be approved up the chain of the cathedral to the bishop. And that, and that's how it was, it was designed and approved at the religious, you know, not, how would I, how would I put it? Up the religious chain, it was designed and approved by the religious, those in our church who make those religious decisions, yes.
Okay. But am I wrong, though? It doesn't match the current church architecture and doesn't really match the current architecture of the building?
It's a Byzantine structure. So I, you know.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Okay. Is the outside of the building preventing the church from renovating the inside of the building?
The outside of the church, yeah. If you look at the building itself, the exterior of the building does not meet whatever religious requirements there are. If you look at the front door of the building, the existing building, it actually opens up into alternate 19. So it's actually unsafe. I mean, the building is, the reason the bookstore moved out of there, because the building was deemed unsafe. So, you know, as the parish council president said, you know, they're not, they're not putting a penny into that building, so eventually it'll disintegrate and collapse, if not request a petition to destroy it or raise it. So I don't know what your question is.
Sure. And do you know when the church purchases building?
Prior to them adopting the...
1995-ish?
Yes, prior to 1995.
All right. I mean, I have a couple of statements I'd like to make, just, I struggle. I mean, would I love to see this building completely updated? I think it's a beautiful design, absolutely, 100%. This is a building, my favorite design currently today, and that air of architecture, I think it's one of the ugliest buildings probably in downtown, currently, how it sits. The struggle is that we, as commissioners, we have to go by what the code outlines for us to do here.
Commission Cora, have you finished, Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yeah, is the board comments, or is this...
Well, he's staying up there.
Okay.
I think the code grants you this authority.
Yeah.
I'm just making a comment, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you for...
Well, I thought you were asking me a question.
I appreciate that, yeah, sorry about that. So the code restricts us in the aspect of our planning, I mean, I'm sorry, our Historic Preservation Board did the right thing based on what the code says. The struggle is, I'm sitting in, is that the code tells us that this era of building is a historic structure. If you were not able to go by and look at it, it looks like a shell just sitting there that was never really any historic significance, right? But the problem is, it is a historic significance in the era that it was built in. It's not the most prettiest building, I would agree with that. But would I love to see this building in that position? Absolutely. But I'm struggling with seeing what the code says and what you all, as a church, is presenting, which I love, and I respect all of you that are out here. I know you all from growing up in Tarpon Springs. But I think there's a few concerns from the architecture that's presented, the architecture of the current building, and what our code says. If there's somewhat of a compromise between the design of the proposed chapel and the air of the building itself, that the way it's currently designed today, I think I can support that. But as it sits today, I find it difficult from the way our code reads. Yes, we can overturn what the Historic Preservation Board says, but I don't really have a whole lot to stand on to say, "This is why we're overturning it." Now, I'm open for other board comments and our city attorney to sway me otherwise, but based on what my understanding is and the research I've done and talking to city staff and attorney and some other aspects, it doesn't really seem like I have a whole lot to stand on to just overturn the appeal that's requested. Now, is there an opportunity to find compromise? I think there is an opportunity to find compromise in the design and also help the church moving forward with putting a chapel here to honor the relics and honor the saints that you all are asking for. Do I find it important? Absolutely. But as a commissioner, I hope you realize that this isn't ill will. It's just where I'm sitting, and I had to make a tough decision based on what the code states today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission Seaver?
Okay. I totally respect our Historic Preservation Board and what former mayor Protos said. This building has been an eyesore for many years. And I would, you know, like something to be done with it, obviously. And I think this item is also unique, because this building has been altered over the years. So what's historic? Would it look like in 1980, or, you know, what it looks like, you know, 10 years ago? Or, you know, there have been changes already made to this building. So I'm not sure it's historic because of the alternations. I also was questioning Section 108B, where it says, "Religious institutions will normally not be considered for designation." And this is a religious institution, so I feel that it should not be part of the historic preservation decision. I also had a question about whether the Secretary of Interior Standards, whether these are required, or whether they're suggested as far as what they cite to be the design guidelines. So those are several questions. I actually would love to see that building change and would like to see a cathedral put there, because it is part of the cathedral's campus and would definitely look much better than what we have now. And as was stated, if we don't do anything, if we deny this appeal, it'll just sit there in disrepair until it has to be demolished. So for that reason, I would approve that we have this go forward as a cathedral.
Did you hear your questions answered?
Commission Donna?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cora, did you have a question?
I wasn't sure if you got your questions answered. I know you had a couple of questions at the beginning of your statement, so...
Yeah, we'll get back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First of all, yeah, just to reiterate, I really respect people on both sides of this that all came out. Obviously, this is a unique issue, especially when it involves a church and our most historic church. So really, as property owners, if this is the will of the church and parishioners, and they can meet city code, then I respect the right and want to do this. But I do want to take everybody through real quick just why I don't believe that it does meet city code. I really just, you can't make an exception when city code staring you, staring you in the face, as I believe it is. So 108, Section J, states that "A change to the status of an individual site shall be processed in the same manner as a petition." And then if you go up to 108, Section D, it says, "The petition for designation shall contain the following minimum information." And then it goes on to list five things that the petition would need to include. I think, as was acknowledged earlier, there was a little bit of a mix-up, and that specific process was not followed. So again, if the appropriate follow, if the appropriate process was followed, then that's something I would be open to consider. But I just don't feel comfortable making an exception when the code states it so clearly in my eyes. And then also, I don't believe that the argument that the building won't be able to be, or not, won't be able to be, but won't be improved if this does not get approved. I don't really like that argument. I feel like the idea that the building's gonna fall down or disintegrate or something like that if we don't approve this is kind of holding the situation hostage. Our code enforcement policies would never allow that to happen. So again, I've been inside the building. I totally respect and understand where you guys are coming from. But at the end of the day, I feel like this code, you can't really make exceptions to. I think it sets a bad precedent.
Thank you. Commission Cora, you have something else to add?
I just would, I thought Commissioner Seaver asked a couple of questions at the beginning of her statement. I wasn't sure if those were answered or not, I just wanted to clarify.
As far as the Secretary of Interior Standards are, you know, their basis of denial, are those suggested standards, or are they required?
I can't answer that question. I'd ask Heather if she has any knowledge of that.
So your design standards, your individual design standards you have are based on those standards. So those standards are incorporated into your design manual? So those are the basis for the approval for the 109 certificates, certificates of approval? So they're not really suggestions, they are really the what we hold people to. And that's what HEB uses as part of their review criteria.
Well, and the other question I had was 108B, where religious institutions can be or considered or designated to...
So this, this appeal is based on Section 109, not Section 108. So I know that they are using Section 108 as their justification to ask for relief, but they did not go through the 108 process. They went through the 109, which is a certificate of appropriateness that talks about the actual changes to the exterior architecture. And that's what your appeal is based on, is HEB denying the design essentially components of what they're proposing.
Back and work on 109, and come back with another rendering, or...
I'll answer that question. So no, the answer is no. The time period would have passed. The appeal would not be timely then. And so, no, it would not be appropriate to go back and try the appeal again. There's another process, and I'd be happy to talk to you about that, but...
Just one thing I have to mention, in case you got the impression I did from Mr. Kouskoudis that it had gone through the entire process and just had to go to HBB. It was recommended for denial by our planning and zoning. They gave you an analysis on there, what they didn't meet. Analysis of turn, which is on page 5 of the staff report. So I just don't want to get any impression that it went through the whole processes. There are reasons for denial, and of course, on an appeal, the proper thing to do in an appeal, being involved in the legal process for 40 years, is you have to look at what planning said in this analysis, which is what HBB agreed with. And you gotta say that it was proven what was given to you tonight, that that is, that is not the case of what was written there. They're laid out to you, and you need to decide really if that evidence is presented tonight, disputed any of those things in the document. If you want a more legal term of that, you can talk to the city attorney. But from a simplistic aspect, that is what you need to look at in making your decision, not whether you want it, you like it, it looks good, the bill, all those reasons you said. Those are the things that had to be disputed in the evidence that was given to you tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess I'm next. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and providing us your input. It's very important to us. For the record, I'd like to declare that I am a member of the St. Nicholas Cathedral. And I was advised by the city attorney that this is not a conflict of interest. First of all, I want to thank the members of our Heritage Preservation Board for serving our community. They are, they make their decision based on a criteria that was provided to them. And also, I want to thank our staff for all the work that they did on this particular item and the work that you do every day. But a couple of weeks ago... But a couple of weeks ago, I'd like to remind everybody that we provided finance to uh, Junior Spongers. Didn't, we didn't follow any criteria, but we used the logic and common sense. And he, I, and I believe it was the right thing to do because I voted for it. Tonight before us, we have a situation that we must use logic and common sense again. Uh, those of you who remember this building, it was a very popular restaurant. I know Mr. Licorice used to go there a lot. I used to go there because it was the place to go there to see friends. Over the years, many people trying to fix this building, they've done many changes. It's not the building that it was years ago. They have done many changes. In my opinion, it's nothing historic about this building. And I don't even know why it's on the historical building list. Probably there by mistake as far as I'm concerned. Um, now the Greek community wants to convert this building to a chapel, a place for the people to worship and to exercise the First Amendment, which is to guarantee the freedom of religion. I believe again, this is an opportunity for us to use logic and common sense. And I believe the chapel with a Byzantine design, it will enhance the area and will complement the downtown. So I am supporting this request of St. Nicholas Cathedral. Any other comments on that? If not, we'll take it to uh, I need a motion to uh, I need a motion.
Uh, I, I have a response comment, Mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to bring up, uh, just to clarify the, about the Junior Spongers funding. Um, just for anybody that may not know, I'm not going to rehash, um, you know, all the points made, but recently unfortunately, Junior Spongers uh, season this year had, had to become canceled due to a lack of registered players. Um, so the board promptly put an emergency agenda item uh, at a meeting out for ten thousand dollars in player scholarships for next year. I'm very proud to say that it passed and I think it's a great thing we did for the Junior Spongers organization, but just to make um, the difference for the record, that funding um, in my opinion was emergency funding. Uh, the season had been canceled. You had over eighty children that were forced to go elsewhere to play sports or not play them within the city of Tarpon Springs. Um, and the Junior Spongers funding um, that we put forth, i- it didn't uh, go against or follow any code or anything like that. So I did just want to clarify, um, I, I don't really think it's apples to apples.
I've got a question.
I, excuse me, let me answer that, please.
Sure.
I uh, appreciate the comment. It's not the same thing. What I'm saying is we didn't use a criteria, but used common sense. And that's exactly what I'm asking you to do. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I, I agree, this building looks beautiful. I struggle with because there is a criteria in place that we have to follow. Um, we have to follow this and that's the problem with the situation. And I would like to ask staff to, to elaborate a little bit more if they can, if they feel like they can or not. Um, from an architectural standpoint, what elements would, would need to be addressed to really fall within the approval side of this? Like how could they come to a compromise with the two? With what the code states and what the, the church wants to do to make it a chapel? Because first they can make it a chapel without doing anything to the exterior, but obviously from an aesthetic standpoint, it's going to look a lot better. And I, I support anything we could do. You know, I'm the biggest proponent up here that screams beautification across the city. But I just wanted to hear from, from staff on what, what avenues can be done.
Sure, um, that particular building, you know, was, is um, basically post um, World War II construction. Most of the buildings that were put up post World War, War II construction were put up at a time when materials were limited um, because of the war and the, and money was scarce. So the designs are, are reflective of that. They're not super um, ornate. They're very plain and utilitarian. So that is what, that they're essentially working from. Their um, proposal is not an unattractive structure, but it's basically reminiscing of um, other historical, it's historicized because essentially what it is, is taking old historical um, and putting into a postmodern context, which is the current context that we're in for architecture. As a result, they would need to propose something that's going to have similar lines and similar function to what's there. And then that would be up to HBB, whether they want to deviate for some of the specialty items that they're asking for, the bell tower and that type of thing. The design that they have proposed, it's not an unattractive building. That's not what staff is saying. Staff does not. I look at things from a post, postmodern, modern um, lens as well, just like everyone else does, because that's where I grew up. But I also know enough about historical architecture and this particular period of time and history that the reason why people have put these particular buildings into histor- into their historic um, guidelines and are protecting them is because they're, they're falling apart and all over the country. And part of that is the result of the fact that they were put up quickly and they haven't been really well maintained. They don't have the same type of care that was put into the old, old world craftsmanship for some of the buildings that you see in some of the older, older periods and even here in Tarpon. So as a result, they decline, hits them very hard. So yes, there are things that they could do. They certainly can work with the staff here to try to come up with some type of design, but really your design guidelines are very limited. It's really, it's really to, they're going to have to come up with something that meets that architectural style or something's going to have to be done with that building other than that. There are other options in the code. Um, I don't know that this building has got to the point that they can ask for a demolition. That's not been requested. So again, I can't, I can't evaluate any of those options until applications are brought forward with the types of information that we need to support those applications. Essentially what was brought forward to our offices, here's the exterior design and the interior renovations that we want to do to the building and that's what we evaluate based on. And, and the criteria at that time was not met. So if there's some other alternative that they have that they can work with um, their, their religious organization to decide, you know, what elements are, gotta be in there and, and kind of work with those particular elements that, that they want to add and meet the, the, the guidelines or attempt to meet the guidelines, that's something that our staff would be willing to work with them. But that's all I can do is offer really what, because it is a specific architectural style. I really can't tell them, yeah, you can do this, you can't do that. You have to meet the cri- criteria of that architectural style or we have to deviate from that architectural style. And that's what your Heritage Review Board does every day. When they meet, that's what they determine whether or not they're going to deviate or allow deviations on these exteriors of these buildings to respect the form of that particular building. And they're looking at each individual building and how it fits into the fabric of your community. So I know that doesn't give you really anything to go on, but it's, it's all I can do is really offer them the opportunity to come and work with, as much with staff as they can, but they're, the guidelines are pretty clear that they would have to respect that architectural guideline, that guideline or HEB would have to approve the deviation.
Sure.
Cause staff is just one cog in that wheel, right?
Yeah, and it's respecting the process. It's not any disrespect to the church or anything along those lines.
Agreed.
Um, again, this is a process that I feel that we need to follow as city commissioners. There's a code that's laid out before us. If there's an opportunity to do some type of compromise, I think this is an opportunity to work with the city and the church together. Um, to come up with some type of design that fits the historic portion of this building and also moving forward to making a chapel that you all, that the church would benefit for many, many years to come and be a great asset for the community as well. Um, I'm not knocking the design. I think it's a beautiful design, but again, as I mentioned, I struggle with what the code states that I'm supposed to be following as a commissioner who is elected. Um, if you just pulled me off the street and said, what do you like? Yes, it's beautiful. Absolutely. Hundred percent. Um, I guess I have another question for uh, the city attorney. Um, I'm just assuming that it could be a potential split vote tonight. Um, when there's a split vote, um, it, am I right? It goes to another meeting at that point or um, what's the process behind that?
On two dash one fifty seven, paren C, it says, in the event that there's a tie vote, the matter shall be considered as equipoise and shall be placed on the next regular meeting for reconsideration.
Another question?
I would just like to ask the applicant to, to work with the city in this situation and I find that, find a compromise in between the design and, and the code. I think it's best to do that.
And I, I, and I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Carr. Um, the one thing I will say and, and, and is, you know, the chapel, it's not a storefront chapel and it's a storefront. The, the current property is a storefront and, and the design cannot entertain, a religious design cannot entertain a storefront. Um, what I would ask this to make, if there would be some, whether you could tell me yes, uh, now or not, if, if we reapplied requesting this property to be removed as a contributing structure, because obviously it's not. Um, and if that's the way, we have to resubmit an application. Uh, I'm just trying to get a feel for the commission, you know, what it would, uh, you know, the first blush, if this would, we would get some support.
I can't answer that. I don't have the information in front of me to answer something like that.
I think you answered by saying that the property doesn't look like it belongs, but, but nevertheless, um, in any event, I, I just wondered if that would be the, the appropriate way to go about.
So let me jump, jump in there. The answer would, uh, Mike would be that it would not be the city commission making that decision.
I understand that.
The petition would go back for the Historic Preservation Board.
I understand that, but assuming that, that, that you, there's an appeal process within the code. Okay, we exercised our appeal process. That's why we're here. And, and you know, do I have confidence in the Historical Preservation Board? I won't answer that. Um, but, but the question would be, I would have to come back, assuming that, that we got a denial, I'd have to be in front of this board again. And you know, and so I, I don't want to, I don't want to do a circular.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Get on a merry-go-round here.
Kuskudas.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to say there's an opportunity, I think, to find a compromise.
And I, and I, listen, trust me, I appreciate that, but you know, from the religious structure, you, you know, as an ortho, we don't, we can't do a storefront church or chapel.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not suggesting that. I think there's still an op, an opportunity to find a middle ground between the two to, to make it look like a chapel and still respect the, the era of the building, right? So I'm looking forward for the opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Do we have another question?
Yeah, no, I, I, I just have an additional comment that uh, I feel like this structure uh, being turned into a, a small cathedral will add to the campus of, of the cathedral. Um, and which is also historic. So I understand we're, we're in a hard position here, but uh, I'd like to make a motion that we um, approve the appeal.
Do the appeal?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I have an additional comment, Mayor.
After the motion is still discussed. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I will pass the gavel. And I'll second. I stick.
Okay, so just, I want to make sure I understand the motion. The motion would be then under section one eleven point zero zero appeals, paragraph C, that you're affirming the decision, or I'm sorry, you're reversing the decision of the Heritage Preservation Board.
All right. Uh, you are in control now, so if you do have comments, uh, Commissioner Donovan has.
One more comment?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Seaver. Um, yeah, I just wanted to answer uh, Mr. Kuskudas' question, because I think it's a really important question. Uh, you asked that if you did reapply through the appropriate process as stated in the code, um.
We shouldn't be going back and forth. We should not be going back and forth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought, I thought the applicant asked a question. I was just addressing.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Just address that.
Okay, sure. Sorry. Um, so just, just for the board's information, um, if, if they were to go about the appropriate city code and everything was matching in the city code, that's still what the church wanted, um, it, it absolutely um, would get me to reconsider. And again, I'd, I'd need all the details on it, but my biggest hangup on this is that we're being asked to make an exception to a code that stared me right in the face. So yes, if they did reapply through the appropriate process, I would be willing to reconsider.
Okay, so we have a first and a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Marla, who's this?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so that will come back to you at your next meeting.
Thank you very much. If you guys don't mind, we're gonna take five minutes break. I know we have one more item, but uh, get right back.
Okay.
We're doing, taking a break?
All right.
Break two.
Are we taking, are we taking a break?
Did we do it the past meeting and I'm just forgetting? It's a lot on this agenda.
I don't know. I don't know, maybe she forgot to have it signed.
I don't remember it.
I'll have to look. I won't let it, I'll look it up, but.
You won't go and keep it?
But can you sign just in case?
Well, I want to make sure we.
We now reconvene our BOC meeting at nine thirty six P M. And we're going to go to item number eighteen, appointments for the Library Advisory Board. We have four vacancies, one reappointment and three appointments, so we're going to do one at a time. Uh, the number one is to reappoint, um, well, Patricia Lovejoy has expressed that she's a, she's interested to be reappointed for another three years. So I recommend that we reappoint uh, Patricia Love, Lovejoy as a regular member, uh, member. This term will expire July first, two thousand twenty-two.
I would be happy to do all four of them. Can we do all four of them together?
Well, we have to select from them, so if we just do one at a time, it'd be a lot easier.
Okay, I have nothing against.
Have the same result.
Yeah.
So you, uh, you okay with that one?
I'm good with Ms. Lovejoy, yes.
Oh.
I agree.
Good with me.
Good with you? Okay. Um, number two is to appoint a regular member to fill the expired term of uh, Sharon Patterson. That term expires July first, two thousand twenty-two. We need to select one, uh, a person from the list. Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, I would select Patricia Pat Hadad.
Okay, Commissioner Donovan?
I would select Ms. Hadad as well.
Commissioner Carr?
I support that.
I'm sorry?
I support it, yes.
And, and also uh, I support Ms. Hadad as well. The third is the appointment as a regular member. This term expires July first, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Donovan?
Uh, I'd nominate Tammy Walker.
Commissioner Seaver?
Uh, Valerie Chula.
Commissioner Carr?